I know we've been here. We're going to bring this meeting to order. Please bow our heads. Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for all the things you've done with us. Thank you for blessing this commission with the skills and the hard work ethic to try to do as best we can for the county and the best we can for the people of Columbia County. Bless our soldiers overseas and especially bless the Ukrainian people. They don't deserve what they're getting and I hope they get out of it in the best way they can. Bless our country. I know that our economy is not what it should be and not what it will be. But I know that you, as our Lord and Savior, can bring us out of it, no questions asked. In Jesus' name, amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or deletions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have Sarah Wheeler with Altrusa making a presentation. We have a proposed memorandum of understanding with the fish and wildlife for the Lake Montgomery Pier. And those are the two additions.
I'm going to put Sarah behind the Sweetwater House from project if that's okay with y'all. And FWC here, we're going to do that right after that.
Everyone would like us to do it, we can do it.
No, that needs to be discussion action.
Okay, alright, so we need to, okay.
We'll do FWC.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Alright, we have, we've got approval of agenda. The Economic Development Advisory Board, presentation.
Chair Commissioners, we just appreciate your time. I'm going to introduce myself and then these two other gentlemen can introduce themselves and we'll be doing the presentation together. My name is Ryan Barkus and I'm with the Florida Development Finance Corporation and we administrate the Florida Resiliency Energy District.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Chris Peterson. I run Government Affairs for Fortify Financial. We are a PACE provider under the Florida PACE Funding Agency, or the FPFA.
Brent Anderson, Government Affairs Director, Y Green Energy Fund.
So hopefully I get this right here. Should I be the first slide? Okay.
The board also has a copy of your presentation in the agenda packet.
Would you like, would you like me to begin while he searches or would you like me to wait?
Can you just pull up the agenda packet, David?
He'll get it, he'll get it.
Yeah, no worries.
We hardly ever have to wait on him, say, let's wait. Well, that's it. Just got to scroll down.
We buy in property there.
That's it.
Yes.
You'll just have to tell David when to change slides.
When to change, yeah, no problem. So you can, you can change past that, that's just to cover. Alright.
Back up, David. Thank you, sir.
That's perfect. Thanks, sir. So, just wanted to, just to introduce PACE to you. We spoke to the Economic Development Board about PACE. PACE is a financial tool that can be used by your economic development department to increase economic development, of course. But PACE in general is called Property-Assessed Clean Energy and this is a public policy initiative that was created through statute 16308. And it allows for the financing of qualified improvements to real property that's related to the three items on the screen there, renewable energy, energy conservation and efficiency, and then wind hardening. So we roll kind of to the next program development slide. I wanted to give you a history of PACE. So PACE in Florida really was developed, not in 2008, but the state legislature in 2008 felt it was a good process to introduce energy efficiency conservation measures and increase building energy performances and include that into local ordinances for governments. And the way they did that is through 16308, the legislature found that these qualified improvements provide a special benefit to these properties and it allows the financing to happen through local government assistance. When first developed, this was a program that would be financed through a county or through a municipality. However, the administrative burden on a county or city was great and it really didn't take off. So they created the opportunity to have these separate legal entities created through 16301. And there are four of those, which we'll go through a little bit later. But in 2013, the initial assessments were levied and currently there have been more than 50,000 residential PACE transactions with over 100 commercial PACE transactions throughout the state. If you can flip the, or slide up. Well, yeah. It'll be the PACE Local Governments slide, keep going. A little, a little bit more. So as, as I was talking about before, these PACE Local Governments that were created to help administrate this program for a county or city, there are four of them, which you just probably noticed on the next screen. But the reason, the way that these PACE Local Governments are able to do the assessments in your county, if you guys allow that to happen, would be through the adoption of a resolution and then the execution of an inter-local agreements between these entities and the county. And also a services agreement would then be taken place with the tax collector and the property appraiser for which they're afforded a fee to be able to do these assessments for the program. These are turnkey PACE programs. They're set up to be turnkey for the county or a municipality. Through program administration, we handle the assessment administration, meaning we collect all the data, we provide a data information to the tax collector and to the property appraiser if you're doing a trim notice. So they receive all that information from us in a format that is easily uploaded in their system and then there's a line created on the tax bill that shows the PACE district for payments. These are also, they're, the levying collection of the non-abluorm assessments fund these qualified improvements or pay for these qualified improvements. And they're similar to assessments that include your solid waste, your drainage and your street lighting. I know we've lost this up on the screen here for you guys, but I'll continue to move forward. The next page would be a list of what these districts look like and there are four of them. And if you had the layout on the screen or in front of you, I just wanted you to show that each one of these districts have either commercial providers underneath them or commercial and residential providers underneath them and they're listed in a basic business tree for you to see. So maybe what I can do, I don't know if you guys can see this, but, so the next slide really provides kind of an overview or a footprint of where PACE is in Florida. It really started in southeast Florida, more in a residential nature. There's a lot more households in southeast, in the southeast, eastern part of Florida. So the program began in that area and has been working its way into the panhandle. So as you can see, there are many counties collectively right now with municipalities included, there's over 36 counties with over 200 municipalities that have already adopted this program. So it is not new and it is in the state and has been working well. The next slide gives you kind of an overview of where it is, if you can see the dark green, as far as the national footprint for the program. So this is not just only Florida, this is also a national program. I'm going to jump into the commercial PACE part of this and then I'll turn it over to the gentleman behind me to talk about residential PACE. The commercial PACE financing process, there are basically, basically three elements to this. There's a project eligibility. So what will happen is you'll have a commercial project. Currently, there are two here in the county that are looking to use PACE. It can be used on new projects, it can be refinanced, or it can be a gut rehab on commercial PACE. What will happen is you'll have a developer that will determine whether there's eligible improvements that can be placed on this property and they'll work with an engineer to confirm that. And then, once that's done, they'll come to us as the district and they'll, and make a determination whether the property is eligible. Meaning, we have to have an agreement with you, we have to have the tax collector and the property appraiser agreements put in place before we can move forward. Then we go through a project review, there's a term sheet that's provided, amortization schedules that are developed and reviewed by financial advisors and also different councils. There's a final assessment resolution that is adopted by our boards, which is the basic, the first part of the lien process that takes place, so that's the notice of the lien. And then we go through engineering and title reports and if there's a senior lender, there's notice and or consent that is provided. For the project closing, there's documents that go through the entire process. If, if, I'll stop for a second, if you go back up a little bit, right there is right where I'm at, the process. So on, I'm on the last part of the project closing, there's a document review with different councils, there's closing and funding. And then the second part of the lien process is the summary memorandum, which is then recorded in, in public record. And then, as I talked about before, there's assessment data that is uploaded to the tax collector and again, to the property appraiser if necessary. And then every year, there's an annual assessment resolution that's adopted. So for the next year, that's the lien on the property. So these are one, this is an annual lien every year. So if you're in a position where somebody tells you that we're senior, the bank says we're senior to them, we are senior to them only in the position of the one annual lien. So it's not the full amount of the assessment. If you, as he, as he moves over to switch the next page, I don't, can I do that now or? Nope, okay. The next page is really just kind of a, an overview of CPACE eligible improvements that can happen here. You deal with HVAC systems, efficiency and lighting, hot water delivery systems in the building envelope, which of course would consider your windows and doors. And we can also deal with roofing and then you have wind hardening elements that can be included in these projects. If you flip to the next page, these are the eligible properties under CPACE, so we can do multifamily projects, industrial and agricultural projects. Of course, office and retail, hospitality, which is the two projects that I currently have that would like to use this financing, mixed use, special purpose and then medical. I'm sure there are other out there, other property types that are out there, but this is currently what's typically funded under CPACE. If you flip to the next slide, and I promise I'm getting to the end of my commercial PACE part here. I just wanted to give you an overview of the financing benefits to the, to a property owner. So unlike traditional financing, you receive 100% financing with both hard cost and soft cost. So you can also take this and you can go over a term of up to 30 years based on the effective useful life of the qualified improvement that's put on the property. So if a roof allows for an effective useful life of 20 years, you can go out 20 years. If windows and doors allow for 30, if they, in their effective useful life, you can go out to 30 years. Typically, the loan to value on a CPACE project is 30% of the project. Typically, it runs somewhere between 20 to 30%, with 30 being a cap. These are non-recourse, they run with the land, they're not the borrower. So this is a benefit to your property owner who could then, this is not an accrual on their, in their financing. So when they go to the bank and request additional financing, this is debt on the property and not on the person. So it'll allow somebody to also obtain additional financing maybe for another project in the area to improve a building or build a new building. This is not accelerated, it's not callable and of course, this decreases utilities and maintenance costs and it displaces higher mezzanine and equity capital. Which if you roll to the next slide, it's going to give you kind of a, an overview of what that means. So in the traditional stack, on the left-hand side, you would have your senior debt is on the top and then you would have mezzanine debt or equity debt. That mezzanine debt typically runs somewhere between 9 to 15%. And as you can see here, we can replace that with PACE, somewhere between 5 to 7%. Now those rates are changing with the marketplace, it may be slightly higher than that right now, but this is on the commercial side. So it gives you an idea that this truly benefits your property owner in the ability to finance, well, you know, and use this for economic development. So it really helps out somebody that's looking for your economic development team to use this as a financing tool to help them bring in a project in your area that may not receive these financing benefits somewhere else. If you flip to the next two slides and we can kind of look at those just really quick, these were early on CPACE projects. As you can see, the PACE transactions are a little bit smaller. They're in the million to $10 million range now and they're growing as these become more popular. But as you see in this case, this was an assisted living facility. It allowed them to update their building to code, it reduced their insurance premiums and it decreased energy usage for that property, which was located in Pensacola. And the next one is similar to like what we're doing with a hotel. It allowed them to replace their HVAC system, which they deemed to be able to provide them a $700,000 savings throughout the life of that improvement. So with that, I'm going to turn it over. If you roll to the next screen, it should show RPACE on there. I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Ryan. So residential PACE, quick overview, if you can go down to the RPACE program overview, please. So I think it's important to say right up front, this is not government tax dollars, this is private capital. What we're trying to do here with RPACE and what we've been successful in doing is creating an option. It's not mandatory, this is something that folks can have the option to use, if this is what they see best for their private property and specifically to protect the most important asset, which is their home typically. This is billed as an annual installment on the property tax bill, it's attached to the property and it's a fixed term and it's a fixed interest rate. Our rates go between 5 and 8% and it's based on the useful life of the improvements that we're financing. So for example, I used PACE on my property. When I moved to Sarasota, I wanted to get impact windows and doors. I got 20 impact windows and doors. Cost $35,000, I'm paying 4.99% over 20, 20, 25 years, my payment's $175. My insurance went down $100, that's two factor, documentation to prove it. Value of my home also went up. Right, this is, this is why we use this program. It's, it's, you know, I've got good credit, but now, now I'm getting, now because my equity's up, I'm trying to get a HELOC. 10% for my HELOC and they don't care if I buy a boat, go to France, doesn't make a difference. For us, these, these dollars have to go towards these improvements. We don't pay the homeowner, we pay the contractor directly when the work's done and the homeowner has signed off on it. No other type of finance mechanism has those safeguards in place, so I'm getting ahead of myself here, but there's no prepayment penalty. In fact, you gotta keep in mind, when you got, when you got a home improvement contract, that's between you and the contractor. The financing agreement is between the property owner and the PACE provider. Let's say you got a bonus while your project's being installed and you want to get out of your PACE, you want to pay cash. No pre, no payment, no, no prepayment penalty, no penalty at all. We'll let you out at any time. And if you funded it, you got to pay it off, of course, and I have to pay mine off when I get my, my HELOC. Doesn't interrupt the transaction, you just pay it off out of proceeds. There's a lot of misinformation going around out there, maybe outdated information, that's what we're here for today, is to help answer these questions to clear up these misconceptions that you're going to, if you either heard about or you're going to hear about. Let's keep going, please. These are some of the PACE eligible improvements, very specific improvements. These are not vanity improvements, these aren't new kitchens and bathrooms, whatnot, these are, these are roofs for folks that need reinsurance. Right, 15-year cap now, right? If you got a roof over 15 years, you got to replace it or you're going to lose your insurance. You're more likely to lose your house because you don't have insurance than, or getting placed in insurance that's too expensive than you are from using our product. Okay, HVAC, 101 degrees I saw in my car today. If your HVAC went out, some say, okay, go get a HELOC. Well, those take 60 days to get done. By that point, we're in the middle of summer. I mean, that's, it's a health and safety issue, right? We have an ability to do this in three days. You got your three-day ride of rescission, of course, but without paying astronomical credit card fees, right? 5 to 8%, no matter what your credit, as long as you got equity in your property, you made your payments on time, that's what you're going to get. For the life of fix, it's not going to fluctuate with the market, it's a fixed term, it's a fixed rate. Water heaters, insulation, lighting, all those things are important. These are, these are building envelope. This is not vanity improvements. Next, next, next slide, please. So you all have seen, I think most of you all have seen this, this presentation before, so I'm going to try to just hit on some of the high points here. You can combine this with, with federal incentive programs. The idea is to reduce energy bills, utility bills, make your home wind resistant, lower your insurance premiums, get yourself insured if that's what you need with the roofs. It is available for residential, commercial homes, says not required. Finance terms up to 25 or 30 years with single-digit interest rates. And it's not, and the rates aren't based on your credit or equity, or they don't just go with the wind, it's based, it's based on the term. So the shorter the term, the lower the interest rate, but we don't go over like 8.4 or something, I'm not sure. We go to 7.99. We're all in the same ballpark, though. And that's, and go up, you know, so that, and the term is based on the, on the, on the improvement that you're doing. So your HVAC's going to be a 15-year product. We don't want you making a payment on something that may have already, you know, is not working anymore, right? So you're not getting a 30-year term on, on an HVAC, you're getting a 15-year term. Hot water here's 10 years, et cetera. So this is the most important slide that you're going to hear about. The next slide, please. So we all know what happened in the mortgage crisis, right? We also know what happened after that. Lots of regulation, lots of fixing doing, right? We had, we had a lot of things to fix and we did. So we're not up here talking about, you shouldn't do a mortgage because there was a mortgage crisis. Well, PACE had some issues when we rolled out. What happened is over the last three or four years, every CEO in these PACE companies have, was replaced with a seasoned financial veteran. And the first thing that these gentlemen did when they got together is say, let's put together a set of principles, consumer protection policies. And the first thing we all agreed on, we wrote it out, we signed it, it's posted on the, on our, on our PACE Nation, our trade organization's website. It's, it's in California state law and we tried to push state law here in Florida, but it didn't get anywhere. We're, we're, we're running towards this regulation. We're already doing it, it's inherent in our business practices today. So Columbia County is going to benefit from the learning curve of this industry. I'm not going to say that there weren't issues in the past and you're going to hear about them. But y'all, this is why we're here, we're here to tell you about the most updated information that you're going to get. And right now, we want to put this in statute, we want to put all these consumer protections right there in law. And if, and if they don't get followed, they can kick us right out. But the truth is, this is how we do business. Nobody wants to do bad business, especially not us. So what's the most important thing on this thing is that we do a confirmed terms call, no other financing product in the world today does this. When you're signing your, your financing agreement, we get on the phone with a representative, it's a 15 to 20, sometimes more minute phone call, we record this phone call. And we say, do you understand that this is what you're doing? Do you understand this is your term? Do you understand this is your rate? This is your payment? And if anything doesn't, doesn't feel right, especially with our senior plus or 75 plus, we put, we put a stop to it and we have somebody else come in, a specialist. Last thing we want to do is get someone in something that they don't understand. You go, go, go do something else. Nobody else does this today and we have recorded phone calls to prove it. I'm happy to have anybody that wants to listen in on one of these, happy to have that happen. I had to call it the CFPB today, right? They're looking, they're wanting, they want to help us make this stronger and they don't know a lot of this stuff either. So it's, it's, it's not uncommon to have folks not understand all these things that we do. That's why we come here and do these presentations, so y'all understand all the different measures we take into place, not just to protect the consumers, but to hold the contractors accountable, which has been our biggest Achilles' heel and to protect our investors, right? This is private money, we, we got, we can't mess around with that. We have to do good business, otherwise you start having to write lots of checks. That's not what we're in, that's what we want to do. We want to help people, we want to be an option. You don't have to use this, but if you do, you got a great option on your hands here. This is, this is, so again, these, these consumer protections, we want them in statute, we want to put them in this resolution, make sure that everybody is, in case anybody else comes in, that they're doing exactly what we're doing. Because we know at this point how to do good business. So we don't pay the contractor until we, the homeowner signed off on it. They got to be, they got to be okay with it, right? And then we, then we turn around and we send an inspector out. They're not like the state inspector or the county or city business, you know, a building inspector. We're just making sure that what you have on your contract is what the contractor installed, right? If you, if you got a five-ten and they put in a three-ten HVAC, well, that's a problem, you got to go and switch that out. It may have passed inspection, but it's not going to pass our inspection, right? That's a safeguard, that's making sure the consumer's getting what they're paying for, right? So we, we do a, we do a closing call, too. Do you understand that you've signed off on this? Because sometimes contractors try to get tricky, right? They try to say, oh, just sign it, I need the money, just sign it. We're not going to release that until we've taken a picture, we know it's installed and everybody's happy. Again, things that nobody else does, but we do, we take this very seriously. Vetting contractors, we go through a very rigorous program. We have a code of conduct, I'm happy to provide our contractor agreement as well. And they have to abide by our code of contract. They can't do undue pressure, they can't send out crazy mailers. We're trying to get them to approve, so we can approve any mailers that they send out. Like, we want to make sure that you're not getting flooded with those fake checks that you see in the mail every day, or those calls about your auto loans that are expiring or whatever, right? So like, this is what we're trying to achieve here and we've been very successful over the last couple of years. So if you want to go to the next slide, please, sir. So this is what I was just touching on, contractor license, background checks, workers comp on insurance, if you've got violent crimes on your, on your history, we're not going to let you offer PACE. Right, and keep in mind, contractors, they're not selling PACE, we're selling PACE, we're the backstop. Contractors offer four, five different types of financing, self-financing, they offer unsecured, they maybe set you up with a banker. We are just an option, just like those other options are, unsecured financing, we're an option for, for folks. So they don't do any of this, so anytime somebody wants to do PACE, they got to send them to us and we're going to do all the heavy lifting, we're going to make sure they can afford it. Right, we're going to make sure that everything meets the qualifications of the program set out by 163.08 in state statute and our own principles that we have in place. So really, that's what I have for you folks today. Obviously, the benefit is clear. You know, in this environment of rising capital, having more options is good for everybody and especially when you're putting all the safeguards in place that we have today. Yes, sir.
How do you make sure your contractors are giving competitive price?
For the actual, for the improvements themselves. So this is a tricky, this is a tricky subject. We do have in place a financing maximums, which we do not share outside of our organizations. So if your job comes in and it's over the maximum financing amount, not that the property owners approved for, but what the actual improvement is, is, you know, with the ceiling is. We're going to ask you a couple of questions. Is there additional work you didn't put on your work order? I mean, if you're doing HVAC, did you have to pour a new pad? Did you have to redo all the ducting? Did you have to do drywall work, siding work, et cetera? And if there's more to it, then we'll, we'll take that as it comes. If it's just a straight swap-out, we're just going to deny it.
Do you give the homeowner the option of, of multiple contractors to choose from, or is it just one contractor?
No, sir, the, usually the homeowner's choosing the contractor and then the contractor is offering the PACE. We don't, we don't like tell you to use a contractor, you can use whomever you want. So if your, if your cousin owns an HVAC firm, we're not going to say no because you got to use our guy. They can sign up with us, they just got to pass our tests, right? They got to go through that, that background check and whatnot. So, and if, and if they don't pass it, we're not, then you got to find, you know, you have to use somebody else. So it is a free market, y'all, this is what it comes down to. If folks, we're not going to necessarily get in the way of something, but if it is over our max financing amount, we're going to, we're going to not approve that contract.
Question.
Yes, sir.
On the, the person that applying for this loan and you said based on the equity or the value that they have on their property?
Yes, sir.
Who's going to determine that? Your appraisal or my property appraisal?
We will use your appraisal if it's recent. We, we can use a property owner's appraisal if it's, if it's by a licensed appraiser and it's recent. Or we, what we do is we have three different AVMs that are nationally recognized and we take what's called the highest confidence score, not the highest value. But there's, there's another category called confidence score.
If, if we just, if, if, if we decide to approve this in our memorandum of understanding, there are things that I would like to see in that memorandum of understanding. Like the only appraisal will be used is our property appraisal of the property. We don't want somebody else coming in and appraise this person's property, the property appraiser, we elected him to do that in Columbia County. And that property appraiser, that should be his call on what the, the appraised value of that property is, instead of somebody from who know where.
So the only question I have is I haven't looked at the property appraisers methods. There's a couple of different ways to do that, there's true value, there's, there's market value. We go by market value, what your home is worth if you turn We go by market value, what your home is worth if you turn around and try to sell it today. So then, if it's a market value from a property appraiser, that's something we're definitely wanting to, to discuss, absolutely.
So notification to the senior lender, that's, you know, we have rent to buy, you know, rent to own homes here, you know, it's kinda it's not as formal as a lot of counties and states, you know, would be. So that, that's a very important issue with you is senior lender notification.
We do lender notification, that's required by state law, and we do, and we abide by a state law. Uh, I will tell you that if the occupant is not the owner on title, which typically until it's paid off, they won't be, it's gonna require the approval of the actual property owner in all circumstances. And if the home was gifted, like, let's say it's one of the, one of the, where you get like a gifted down payment, right? That whole, all that equity didn't belong to you. And so we, we have a, a policy where we won't lend on, like a Habitat for Humanity home, we won't lend on, on those. Unless until you take title and it's your home, if you ever do, then, then at that point, we welcome your business, but if you have a reverse mortgage and you are a senior with the reverse mortgage, we will not do assessments on that either, unfortunately. It's but I think frankly, fortunately, right? I think that it makes sense not to impede on that transaction.
Tell, tell me, uh, I, I wanna hear it from you, and I wanna hear it from our property appraiser too. Tax collector, um, how did people take advantage of this?
The contractors are the, the ones that tend to take advantage of this, uh, which is why we put these additional safeguards in place. The, the way that contractors try to take advantage is by putting pressure on folks to, uh, give them their money early, uh, by, by signing those completion certificates before they're actually done. Uh, they try to charge more than they should, and that's why we put those pricings in place. Um, you know, frankly, it's, I'm having a hard time even recalling because of the last three years, four years, we've been doing all these things, and, and the only, the only issues we, we hear, the only complaints we hear are like, the contractor left nails on my driveway when I popped the tire, they let the cat out and stuff like that. But really, like with the financing, with those phone calls and going through everything, the contractor can't be there. It has to, we, we call that homeowner directly. We speak with them. If we hear a contractor coaching them, we call them back, and I got proof of that as well. So we've, all these safeguards are meant to mitigate the issues that we've seen with contractors. That's what it comes down to.
They, uh, I, I heard you say that, uh, after the job is completed, that, uh, you send a inspector out, uh, this is after our, uh, building inspector have signed off on the completion of the property.
That's correct.
You also, also sent a, a independent inspector out also.
Third party independent contractor, and that's called asset verification. And again, I guess this is another way a contractor could take advantage is in the, in the home improvement contract, it says it's a five ton, but they turn around, they, they install the three ton. Most folks wouldn't know that, and on the actual building inspection, all, they're not looking at the home improvement contract, they're just making sure the work that you did is what you pulled the permit for and has done the code. But our inspector's gonna know that if that's a, a five ton, or not a, or not a five ton, that's a three ton, then that's gonna be a problem for us. So it's not, I mean, the permits are, are helpful. We require, if, if you all require a permit, then we require you to upload that permit into our system as well, a, a final completion permit. So that's part of the process.
Mr. Chairman.
Let's talk about contractors. You said anyone that is a licensed contractor in the state of Florida eligible to give a quote on a project?
So the, let me just answer that in two parts here. First part, a licensed contractor can, can sign into a home improvement contract with the property owner. If they're gonna offer pace as an option for payment of that home to pay, to fund that contract, then they have to be signed up with us, and it's not just that they're licensed, because we all know that that doesn't mean that they don't have a criminal history. We, we go do a full background check on every contractor.
All right, I got it. So my local contractor would have to sign up to be part of your program.
Yes, sir.
In order to be it on it.
Remember, just to offer, remember, because they offer lots of different financing, but to offer ours, they have to go through this process, correct, sir?
And so if we do not have any local contractors that signs up, then that customer chooses a contractor out to prove that you all have already pre-approved.
That would be an option for the homeowner. The other option is to ask their contractor to sign up with us. It's free, and it's, again, it's a process that they gotta fill out the paperwork and show their proof and whatnot, and proof of insurance and everything, but you know, it is, uh, that's what they would have to do. Again, this is, this is the way we mitigate issues.
Mr. Chairman. My only concern, my concern with this, and mainly on the residential side, is a potential for contractors to hard sell this. I mean, so I, I need to hear more about your protections to stop that from, from happening. I mean, it, to me, i- if, if a resident chooses to seek out a contractor because they have a problem, and this is one of the options, uh, offered amongst several, you know, it's just there, then I, I really have no problem with that. But if, if, if they're out there advertising, hey, you can get this pace uh, funding and, and putting that as part of their advertisement to lure people in. I mean, I, I can just see where they can take advantage. They can hard sell this and maybe convince people to buy stuff they might not need. And I think that's probably some of the past criticism of the program in the past, was a lot of that was going on. You know, I mean, to me, i- if you really, if you really, uh, wanna stop that from happening, um, I would stop, I would ban any advertising for pace as a use of finance, and when, when they go out and market to people, you know, to sell their product, let pace come up in, in the backend. I mean, so, but that's, that's the concerns I've heard about this program in the past. I understand that you guys have, uh, done a lot to mitigate that, but I, I just need to hear more, you know?
Well, sir, uh, and I appreciate the, 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 the concern, and there's a couple of different ways I can answer this, but I'm, I'm just gonna be straight with you. We we, in our code of conduct, we spell out what contractors can and cannot say. They can't say it's a free program, they can't say it's free money, they can't use logos from the county, they can't use our logos. None of that stuff can happen. That's, and if they do, they're found violating that, then, then they're out. That's what we can do. But frankly, this is a private property, right, for folks to leverage directly in the way they see fit, and at the end of the day, we are the backstop. We are the ones that we spell out. If we just had you sign DocuSign and we didn't go over any terms, I could see where there would be concern. That's why we do that. So we go through and we talk to you before you're, before you're in, before you even get to that point, right? We go through and we say, do you understand this is what you're doing? And so it doesn't really matter how they were sold, it matters how we qualify and what we do once you come into our ecosphere. So we can try, we can try to control that, but the truth is, there's third party lead generation firms that they'll take whatever's in the news, they'll take, oh, there's new insurance program, we're gonna try to lure people in and say that you have to do this, otherwise you're gonna lose your house. You know, not, all that stuff was, we don't allow any of that stuff, but it's also hard to circumvent, I mean, they circumvent the system by using third party lead generators. All we can control is what happens when you come into our world. And that, to me, sir, is why we put all these things into place, so we set the record straight. If we find out through this process, oh, the contractor told me it's free money. They told us we're gonna get all this savings and whatnot. Well, we're gonna set the record straight, and then we're gonna probably take action against that contractor as well. That's what we can do. Right? And that's also something that your bank's not gonna do with the HELOC, Goodleap or any of those other firms that do unsecure, they're not gonna do any of that stuff either. They're gonna take your money and run. We're, we'd rather say no and have you go about your way than, than, than say yes to, to a bad deal, where, where you don't understand the terms, what you're signing up for. So we take great pride in what we're doing here, sir. Go ahead, Mitch Ford.
I, I, I don't have a big concern about commercial. I, I think that would take care itself in a sense of, of ever who want to use this paid financing for commercial. But I also know the importance of, of that person that, that falls into that gray area where, uh, for, for, for instance, when we did the million dollars for home improvement for disabled, disabled citizens, veterans, and people sixty-five or older, two out, two out of three applicants fell through the crack. They just made a little bit too much. But they don't have the credit to go in and do a bank loan in order to make the improvement that they wanna make on their, on, 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 on the property. So, so that, that's a good thing, but, but, uh, it helps those people that, that need that little safety net to be able to make, make improvement. But I, here's my major concern in residential, uh, is that do a memorandum of understanding, this board choose to do so, uh, with this program for residential, is there any homeowner that is, is, uh, is having their special assessment right off the book is not eligible for this program? So if, 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 if my mother is getting exempt on, on garbage and fire protection, then they are not eligible to apply for this program, and, and that should be in writing. You are not eligible. If you can't pay file assessment and you can't pay garbage assessment, why would you open yourself up to go into a loan for twenty years on a standing lien that's gonna be on your property?
Yeah, I've heard.
That's, that, to me, that, that's a consumer protection, that, that vulnerable bunch of people out there. I saw, I saw something where uh, it said blacks are very bondable to this program. I read an article that someone gave me that mentioned that. That low black income are very bondable to this program. So, so I wanna make sure that, that the, the consumer protection is there, no matter what color you are, and it did not mention anybody else but black. Uh, it has that protection, that they are not, uh, 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 gonna jump at this and don't have the ability to pay that mortgage payment and that lien goes on his property. Talking with the tax collector, if they don't pay, that, that lien is not paid, he gonna sell a, 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 a certificate, tax certificate on it.
Yes, sir. So I, I'd love to respond. So your first point about not, uh, if you're getting exempt from, from, uh, others, other assessments. We've heard that before, and, and, you know, I, I'll tell you, we're not opposed to it, because actually it makes, I think it's a valid argument. The only counter I might offer is that we do an ability to pay. So if the ability to pay comes up short, then unfortunately, they would not be eligible for the, for the program. The only question I have is those folks are saving a little bit of money on their garbage and whatnot, but if they need to replace a roof, this may be an option for them in order to do that. So I will leave it up to the, to the board about how y'all wanna move forward with that particular uh, question, but as far as your, the, the black statement, and, and I'm certainly sensitive to that, I, I will tell you that when this, when this came up for discussion in Missouri State uh, legislature, the NAACP actually stood up and, and expressed their support for this. We're actually going to LA for another NAACP event next week. I, I think that any information about that may not be substantiated, so I may ask you to, to maybe dig a little deeper, and, and if you have something that we wanna discuss, I'm, I'm happy to do so with you, but in my experience, it's actually not been the case at all, so. Wait, Mitch Ford.
I want you to explain a little deeper about, uh, superseding a mortgage with your loan. Now, you said that, um, well, if I understood you right a while ago, you're saying the bank would only be liable for that payment that year? Is that what?
Since what's in arrears, and it's not, it's not, it's not accelerated, so you can't call your note, we can't say, yo, it's the whole thing. It's only what's in arrears is, is the actual amount that supersedes the mortgage.
So what, but if they say they, they foreclose on that property, now that loan still goes with that property, right?
So who's forec-, with the bank forecloses?
Yeah, if the bank does a foreclosure.
If the bank does a foreclosure, then the assessment is only, we're only, it's in arrears, just like your taxes. It's not, it would, it would remain.
So whatever balances on that loan, the bank will be responsible for that.
True, and the home would also have the improvements therein.
Yeah.
Did you wanna say anything about that?
I wanna know who your lobbyist was to get. But. So, so basically, what makes that, um, makes you supersede the bank is because it is, uh, taxed.
Yeah, and another way to look at that is, we're able to offer a rate of capital that you can't get even today with a good FICO score, with the fixed term, fixed interest rate. If you can find five percent for twenty years with a fixed term and interest rate, uh, that's not acceleratable, you know, without a FICO score. Um, again, ability to pay, you gotta make sure, we gotta make sure you can afford it, and you gotta prove documentation. We're not gonna take your word for it, it's not stated. Right? Then, then please let me know. The reason we exist is because nobody else could, no other bank and no other institution was, was willing to do this. The only way we can offer that rate of capital to these, to these folks who, who need these improvements, and, and folks even like myself that used it. Right? I just moved a new house, thirty-five thousand dollars, I can't afford that. Right? And, and what I was being offered, the best thing I got was a rate of like nine percent, but it was a ten year note, that my payment was gonna be like over six hundred dollars a month. So for me, it allowed me to make these improvements at a rate that, at a, at a term and a rate and a payment that I could afford. And that, to me, is, is exactly what we're, why we're doing this, and in this market especially, is why it's important. Well, and, and lower my insurance premiums, exactly right. And my heating bill went down too, but I think that's because I turned my pool pump off, but.
Any more questions? So Chris, on the, with you being with Fortify, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now the young man behind you that we heard earlier on in the week, are y'all totally separate companies?
Two different providers.
Okay, okay, that was, you answered my question, because you're a provider, Fortify, you're a provider here. How many more providers are qualified in Columbia, I mean, in state Florida?
For residential, there's four.
Okay, I've seen. Right, come on down. Come on down.
So on, on the very bottom, uh, to the left-hand side is the Florida Residential Energy District, which is what I administer. We have all commercial providers underneath us, we actually have more than twenty-four commercial providers right now. But then if you look down at the other ones, you have Renew Financial, uh, you have Fortify, Home Run Financing, and then Y-Green, uh, which is where Brett is from.
I mean, Chris brought up some valid, uh, checks and balances, if you wanna say, with Fortify. How, how am I to know that these other companies walk the same tune as you guys?
Well, that was, that was what I was saying. We all signed the, the consumer protection policies, that's our, through our trade organization, all the CEOs sign it. We all put it into, into business practice. We all get audited, you know, under the FPFA, you know, it is a government a- agency, so we're audited every year by an independent financial auditing firm. So these, all these things are, are something that we all do. It's state law in California, so when California made it state law, we actually just implemented throughout the whole country.
Okay, so how, you're in competition with these other guys?
Once we get out of this room, sir, yes, we are.
Okay, so where's your leverage on your interest?
Service, uh, how we, uh, how fast we can, we can, you know, pay contractors, you know, assuming all the paperwork's in order. You know, how, I mean, for example, Y-Green spends a lot more money on advertising than we do. We're small. We work with certain boutique firms, we like to use the bigger firms, we like to, you know, do certain areas. Um, but really comes down to service, it comes down to your platform, like how easy it is for contractor to use and a property owner to use, you know, a tech advantage. So there's really not a ton, because the rates are all almost identical.
I'm not a hundred percent sure I understood it, but one of the complaints I heard out of South Florida was, I didn't know who the heck I was talking to. Because I had this lending institution, the next thing, I had to call from this guy. And he was Spanish, he wasn't, that, that, you know, in a matter of a week's time, I had four different calls, I didn't know who I was talking to.
Yeah, so Commissioner, I like to think of having these different institutions as like, uh, a great example of how capitalism works. We all keep each other accountable, and we all push each other forward. So if one of us stopped doing this, we would know right away, and we would go after them and say, why aren't you doing this? We, we would, we would make them get on board and work with us, and it keeps every, it keeps our interest rates low, it keeps everyone competitive, and it pushes us all in the right positive direction.
Yes. What, what is your explanation for over fifty thousand residential loans and only a hundred commercial loans?
So, so when this started in two thousand thirteen, the residential providers were here in place first, and then CPACE or Commercial PACE came in behind that. So, and of course, you're talking about, I mean, Commercial PACE is like any other commercial loan. You know, you're, you have, you're gonna look at these in your county, there's gonna be, I have two that are waiting that would like to move forward. But I, I mean, we've done underneath our umbrella, I've done twenty, we just closed on twenty-three, and it's been three years. So a commercial is a much slower process. You're not, you're not in, putting in a three-ton air conditioner, a five-ton air conditioner. You're talking about a project that is going through a capi, a capitalization, uh, you know, process through attorneys, through documents, and if it's new construction, you have the, the build-out period, so, uh, it's a much slower turn on commercial.
Are you familiar with the, uh, pro, the Sweetwater Project in Columbia County?
I, I might have had some conversation with Jennifer on it. Um, she thinks she would like us to try to have some conversation with them, but I have not had any direct conversation.
Fair enough.
Any more questions?
Yeah, yeah. Come on down, Kyle. Thank y'all very much. Very informative. Yeah, yes. Man there, I think, had something to say, Rob.
Who did? Did you have something to say?
So it'll take David just a
So it'll take David just a couple of seconds to switch over to, um, Mr. Keen's presentation.
Okay. I'll try to talk slow for you. Give me some time. I'm supposed to point, right? Okay. This is, and the, uh, the down arrow button. I got it. Hey Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to, to talk about PACE, uh, about the PACE program. You know, tax collectors and the property appraiser who's in our audience today, we all have concerns with the program. I think I'm, I got voted to be the one to do the talking. Um, so, but we both have serious concerns with the program, have always had it, uh, concerns with this program. And, and I like to look at it as it's, it's good intentions that are going wrong in this program. It's a great idea. It's the application of the program, uh, all across the country that have called, it's causing the problems. Y'all hit on a lot of the topics, a lot of the hot button issues, uh, with the, with problems with the program. But the history of the program, it started in Berkeley, California back in 2008. It was picked up by Obama and Vice President Biden at the time, who touted it. California, it, it expanded, exploded, uh, throughout California. And then other states start picking it up. The problem that California was running into, they quickly learned, was that the law as written had no consumer protections written in place for the, for the property owner. It was all, it was almost like the wild, wild west, almost like the subprime real estate market of 2008. When you walk into the bank and if you were breathing, you got $400,000 loan on your, you know, mortgage on your house. So they kept having complaints and complaints. So California finally stepped up in 2018 and voted in consumer protection laws to protect its citizens from the predatory lending and the predatory contractors that circle around this PACE program. Missouri adopted the program. It took off. And the predatory lending and the predatory contractors started attacking, uh, in Missouri. So just last year, they passed consumer protection, uh, for their state. Florida, as I said earlier, started in 2010 and now we're at what, 2022? And Florida doesn't have the consumer protection laws in place that California and Missouri has ran into. So Florida still has those issues and they have for the last two years have tried to put in consumer protection, uh, into the law. In fact, the last bill last year was, I think, House Bill 228 that detailed a lot of our concerns as tax collectors and the property appraisers to, to put in basic common sense protections for, for these homeowners. This is a loan that you're getting. Right now you walk in to get a PACE loan, they check, do you have at least 20% equity in your home? Have you paid your property taxes for the last three years? That's it. There's no, can you afford the loan? And there is none of those protections in this program. And, and this program, when it, if it was to be adopted, is going to be added to their tax bill, which is going to be a lien on their property and cause them to lose their house quicker because they put an air conditioner in their property. Um, I have a few slides that we'll go over. So, you know, our concerns on this. You know, the program, as a government program, the board would borrow money at a lower rate, loan it to their citizens to improve their house, improve their, uh, windows or the roof. And then the tax collector would collect it. So it's government lending, government collecting. Some individuals looked at that program and decided they could make some money on it in the private sector. And these private companies now have, have come in and convinced local governments to be the administrator of the program. So now we have private money being lent, lent out to these customers and being collected by governmental entity. And government should never be in the business of collecting a private debt. That's, you know, that's not what the tax bill's for and that's not what we're for. But that's the situation that we're in. Private companies lend this money on these PACE loans and we have to collect it on the government tax bill. So it gives the impression that it is a government program backed by the government, backed by y'all, the Board of County Commissioners. And like I said, we, you know, we should never be in the business of collecting a private company's debt on our, on our tax bill. It's just not, yes, sir.
But Kyle, the legislative guilt is, is a reason under the Florida statute, you can do that. Am I right?
Yeah, they, I mean, they, that's not the original intent of the program. That has morphed into that now. That is correct though. The original intent of the program was you as the Board of County Commissioners would go out and use your power as a local government to borrow money at a cheap interest rate, loan that money out to these individuals. And then we would collect it on the tax bill. It would be government loan, government lending, government collecting. But now that program has changed and morphed into these, uh, you agreeing with these other companies to be the administrator of the program.
Yeah. But what I'm saying, we are not, we wouldn't be doing anything wrong because this program is set up through the Florida legislature.
I mean, if you look at it as being wrong, yes, sir. That's correct. Yeah. It's just, I don't personally think, and the tax collectors don't think that we should be collecting a private company's debt to a government means.
But that's a, that's a, that's the opinion of the tax collector.
Correct. And that's why I'm here. Yeah. I'm strictly here just to give my opinion. Uh, when you pass this program, it will mainly affect my office more than the property appraiser. And, um, you know, I have no hand in setting policy that is y'all's, you know, y'all's area. Uh, but I'm here just to give the other side of the coin, so to say, that, to talk about the, the pitfalls and the concerns in this program.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Keen.
Yes, sir.
I, I noticed in the presentation, uh, that was given that there's service agreements with the tax collector and the property appraiser's offices. I'm just asking for practical, can y'all refuse to enter into those agreements or are you bound to enter into those agreements?
My understanding, we can't. You know, if you pass it, we have to accept it and we can put different criterias and stuff like that in this agreement. But if you pass it, because you're, you're the legislative body of the county, you know, we have to, uh, accept that program.
So my, my practical question for you is if the board decides to go down this road, we're not going to get to the end and then you say, I'm just not going to sign.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. If you pass the program, I will follow the law and do my job. Absolutely. I only ask that if you do decide to pass a program that let me have a seat at the table in crafting, you know, some of the rules and regulations. But, um, as I said earlier, this lien, if passed, is a lien on the property. And if it's not paid, that will become a, a tax certificate. And then tax certificates, if they're not paid, become tax deeds. So the property owners could lose their property. And they have in the state of Florida, it's documented, lost their property because they all of a sudden cannot pay their property taxes because they have a PACE loan on their property. And you can Google it. I'm not going to pull up articles and show you, but you can Google and look at all the horror stories out there of people getting deals, you know, that they can't afford. Um, so our main concern is that there's no, this consumer protection. That's our concern. If, if the law was to pass and consumer protections were be, be put in place, it would be more tolerable to us. You know, because I, I feel like our job as, as the government is to protect our citizens, protect them in any way that we can. And I see if you can ask a question, Mr. Ford.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
And, and it's just going to be, you say, say somebody files bankruptcy. This, this being it's on their property, it would not protect them under bankruptcy for this long? Is that correct?
Yeah, it won't go, it would not go away.
So I, I guess what I, I guess what I'm sitting here thinking is if, if somebody did file, I mean, I, I've been in business. I've, you know, I've done judgment against people, a judgment, it's a judgment, just what it says, that I, that says they owe me this money or owed contract, whatever. But if they file bankruptcy, I'm just out, basically. But, but yeah. So then you would be protected by bankruptcy because it's on the taxes. That's correct, right?
Everything they do is like they are us, the government.
That is correct.
Nothing, that, that, that lien, that lien foregoes anything else.
You're, you're signing over your rights to, to them, basically. They become a governmental entity acting in your stead.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I, I had a long discussion yesterday, I think Wednesday, yeah, yesterday with Kyle. And he shared his concerns and, uh, uh, and we all agreed that, uh, consumer protection is the most precious part of discussion that we want to make sure that, uh, everything is on a more even keel. Joel, this question is for you. Under a memorandum of understanding, ever were out on this board field that it would enhance consumer protection? Can we state that, you know, memorandum of understanding that they would have to follow?
Yes, sir. So I, I think what the initial presentation, uh, suggested and what Mr. Keen is also saying is that there'll be a negotiated inter-local agreement, just like we do with other governmental agencies. There, there, PACE is a governmental agency, the way it's set up under the statute. So yeah, we can negotiate terms. If there's certain things we want to include or exclude, things we want to require. PACE could also, the, the providers could always say, we can't agree to that. Well, then we don't form an inter-local agreement, right? So yeah, everything will be up to negotiation. I think that was the request Mr. Keen was making is when that's negotiated, he like, he won't sign that agreement, but he like to participate in the negotiations. So yes, sir. If there's particular issues of concern for the board, that'll be part of the inter-local agreement negotiation.
So we can, so we can set our own rules and regulations if they are allowed, they want to go wet by them and we agree to them also.
That's my understanding.
It's not just like the whole state of Florida, we might be different in another county. But, but I'm like, I'm like Ron, I'm very concerned. I, I know we have, we have a lot of people that are hardworking people that have money and not a lot of money. I don't want them losing their houses, you know? And, and this thing about the contractors, I, I would, you know, I think it's going to get, might get tough for them later in the next couple of years. And I don't want them out. I'm like, Toby, I mean, a contractor could really sell this, you know, unscrupulous ones. We have some wonderful ones, but.
And, and go off what you said there, Commissioner. You know, in talking with other tax collectors across the state that have adopted this program, they said, once you adopt PACE, then the PACE contractors target your county and they'll start showing up. And they go door to door selling little old granny, little old grandpa, you know, in their condition, a roof, solar, solar panels, windows, you know, in their house and attaching these liens on these properties. And, and they can say they have these protections in there, but we all know that there are predatory contractors, predatory lenders that are going to target these individuals in our community. I have a few more slides if you don't mind. So to that, you know, they target, there are studies out there that target low-income homeowners. Commissioner Ron, I think you were mentioning that, you know, the elderly, veterans, minority and disabled. Large portions of their business is from these communities who can't afford the, the PACE loan to begin with because they, that is not a requirement. A requirement is not, can that person that I'm giving this loan to, can they afford to pay it back? And it's not in the rules at all. You notice while I go in the gentleman showed the R-PACE and showed their consumer protection grid. That was not one of the bullet points on there because that's not a requirement. They don't check to see if you can afford to pay it back. And, you know, just because they have equity in their house and they pay their property taxes on time doesn't mean that they can afford a thousand, a $2,000 air conditioner payment every year. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't make sense. Mr. Commissioner, talking about, uh, one of our gentleman while I go mentioned Missouri and how, how great the program was. This chart right here is from Missouri, a study that was done. And you can see the, uh, blue dots are, are neighborhoods that are predominantly black. And the gold dots are neighborhoods that are predominantly white. And the green dots are ones that are, there's no majority. So you can see that this study was done in 2001. So it wasn't three or four years ago. It was recent. That, that, uh, communities in the black neighborhoods end up paying 102% of their home value for their, for their PACE loans. The members in the white community ended up paying only 5% of their home values. So these loans are, are targeted to the low-income individuals. And that's the ones that are going to have trouble making the payments, being able to afford it. They're the ones that, you know, the little old granny is going to lose her house. I keep using that example, but losing, losing her house because she put an air conditioner in it. There are stories out there. You can Google it all, all the time and see it. Here's an, here's another one for you. This is Broward County just done recently too. The red boxes, if you see the red, anything inside the red is majority black of Hispanic population. And the darker the green, the more concentrated that is for homes that have a 3% or higher annual pace assessment on their property, 3% of their assessed value. So if you've got a $100,000 home, 3% or higher, you're looking at a $3,000 potential pace assessment. That's a lot to come up with one time. And they do disclaimers and, and they tell them, but we all know that people don't understand financing as well as we all should.
When you say 3,000, that's 3,000 a year.
Correct, yearly, for 15, 10, 15, 20 years, 25. And I mean, there again, you just said, that's, this is, you know, here in Florida. So they, these PACE providers target the low-income individuals that, you know, have trouble getting finance already and they have trouble making those, those payments to begin with. There is a study out of Broward that showed in 2016 that, um, people who got PACE loans in 2016 faced foreclosure rate at more than double the rate of people who got into 2019. What that study means is the longer these people had the PACE loans and more trouble they had making the payments. They could handle the payment in 16, but in 2017, 2018, 2019, they couldn't handle the payments. And that, I just heard him say that's not true, but that's from the Bloomberg article on April 6th of 2021. You can Google it and look it up. So these, I mean, these problems are, are out there. They're documented. You know, I, I have, we as a tax collectors have been fighting this fight here in Columbia County since 2014. Uh, other versions of, of the board, um, have not decided to take it up. Um, the city came to me shortly after I got elected in 2020 and explained the same thing I'm going through with you now. And they decided that it wasn't a project that they should be involved in. Um, I had recently had a meeting with David Kraus and one of the gentlemen is out here in the, out here in the audience and explained my concerns and, you know, told them that I would not be on, on board with PACE uh, until we have more consumer protections and more, more protections for our citizens.
Kyle, in your research.
Yes, sir.
With other, uh, tax collectors, what have you throughout the state? I guess my biggest concern is it's been before the legislature twice, I understand. And we, state of Florida hasn't put consumer protection in place.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's, and, and I'm going to pick on our newest employee, uh, as he's hooked up in Tallahassee. Why didn't it happen? I mean, it seems like if I was a state representative, you know, as we are here today, we're supposed to protect our citizens.
Sure.
Why didn't it happen? I mean, other than the lobbyists taking the state.
There you go. I mean, I know, I know, in doing my research, I know at least one of the people in this room, their company spent over $900,000 lobbying, you know, spending in Florida lobbying the governor and, and the legislative leaders. And I'm not saying that's the reason why, but it, it does make sense that, you know, that lobbyists, you know, convinced them that it's not the right, it, it's been up there twice. So.
Well, I've been California and Tim Murphy's opinion only. There may be, you know, if it broke off the United States tomorrow, I'd be good. But they came up, they'd be, they, they came up with consumer, Joel just told me, he went on vacation. He said, don't go to California, go to Oregon. But my whole point is, is that it seems as though that to me, uh, that, that, that would be a priority, you know? And, and what, uh, Chris, I think it was, yeah, what Chris, you know, I was impressed that, you know, Fortify, who they may be, that, you know, it sounds like they've taken a step to do it in-house. Because I would assume Chris probably realizes that, you know, it, it's coming down the, the pike eventually, you know, I would hope in Florida, but who knows, you know, we'll see.
And, and I would, I would welcome that if it came, you know, it came through, but it's not there yet. That's the, and that's the problem. You know, at, at a later point, if, if these consumer protections were put in place by the legislature, I'd be more open to relooking at that, you know, at the situation. But, you know, my concern is it deals with the tax bill. People could lose their home quicker because of this. It's not clearly, you know, it's targeted to our, our most vulnerable people in this community. And, uh, and I think somebody said earlier, you know, the biggest problem is on the residential side, not commercial it so much. And, you know, from talking with other tax collectors who have dealt with these PACE programs, commercial is where they get, is where they try to get in the door and then they hammer you non-stop until you give them residential. Because that's where a lot of their money comes from. What was it? 50,000 residential, 100 commercial? You know, that, that is what the pattern, from what these other tax collectors have told me, who have dealt with, uh, these PACE providers. You know, they get in the door with commercial and then they hammer you, hammer you, hammer you until you give them residential. So.
But at the end of the day, it's still hard to see.
It is, absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, I mean, it's, they want commercials so they can get the residential program. I'm pointing. Okay. So, I mean. I mean, we show there's 30, what, 38 counties in the state. I mean, and not every county is in love with the program. I mean, Hillsboro County just recently ended their program. Hernando has ended it. Several counties have dropped residential but kept commercial. Mr. Murphy, you're talking about LA, California. LA County, which being in California is probably more of a liberal area, they ended, they ended their program because of the complaints and the predatory lending and the predatory contractors that they were having. They even ended their Pace program. So not everybody, not every county is jumping on board to be a part of this program and some are leaving that ship also. So it's not all roses, there are some thorns involved in this program. And you say, I gotta, I gotta get to the slide? Reloading it? I have like a two minute, like a minute and a half video, if you don't mind. And Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Williams, while he loads the program, the indigent program is, is, you know, is targeted for our low income individuals. And that program, you know, we weigh the fire and the garbage and the county assumes that for these low income individuals. If we were to add the Pace program to it, the problem with adding was, including that into the resolution is that indigent program is a yearly process. That customer may qualify for the indigent program in year one. Year two, they don't qualify for the indigent program. They get a Pace loan attached to their account. And then year three and year four, you know, they qualify for indigent. So, I mean, we'd have to work out, if, if that's what you wanted, we'd have to work out some way around that or some safeguards to make sure that, you know, if they have applied for indigent, that they, they couldn't get settled with that Pace.
99 and 2/3 of the indigent exemption is year after year after year.
That is, that is correct, yes, sir, yeah. And but some, but some years they do miss and they'll have to pay it. So it's something we'd have to work out and get the details of, but it's just something for your consideration and thought. Here's a quick video from Hillsboro.
Okay, yeah, come down in front of the. John O, come down to the thing, say your name and that way we've got you on.
Just wanted to make a note, this came out in 2020 and these are based on assessments that originated years before that. Our processes have changed substantially since this came out, which this is the kind of stuff why we changed what we did and include those consumer protections, thank you.
What'd you say, 2020?
Is it, is it true that LA County dropped out of the program?
LA County was in the business space and it was not profitable for them. In fact, we joined the program and we sent out to the board, the county said we're gonna end this program. The whole narrative were of the tax violations.
Okay.
And we're also talking that Hillsboro County is not coming back for commercial pays.
Yeah, they, yeah.
We, I think I understand that there's always, and this is really a new thing and it's, it's gonna have bubbles and things are gonna happen. And, and everybody, and the problem is by the time they figure it out, there's 20,000 loans and people are losing their homes. So it's a, it's a catch 22 almost, you know, and I understand completely what you're saying.
Loan, they couldn't afford or didn't really understand.
The Pace program.
2020 video, I don't know if it's.
It's just a news video?
Well, it's Consumer Report video, so you can see the, what the Pace providers, you know, were charging this gentleman for his air conditioner and how much he was paid. I mean, I can summarize it for you. He ended up paying $35,000 on his, on his assessment for his Pace loan for his air conditioner, for his house.
How much was air conditioner?
They showed the bill, I got to, you know, go back and look at it.
But like I say, I think we clarified, oh, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Oh, I mean, you know, we can, we can talk about this all day long, but personally, I think the Pace program would be good for commercial, but I'm not comfortable with residential at this time.
I agree.
But I would make a motion that we try to negotiate with them for a contract for, for commercial only at this time, not residential.
Do we need Joe, do we, we just want to give direction to Joe to get with him and talk about it?
Well, I'll do a second for discussion.
Yeah, do you, do you wanna, go ahead and.
Mr. Chairman?
You go with me?
Yeah. Our recommendation would be you direct the attorney to work on this and maybe even establish a committee to help draw up the criteria that you would like to see.
So, so I would change my motion to have the attorney work on this and draw us up something we can look at and, and maybe approve for, for commercial only.
Before, I, I agree and that was my, why I asked the attorney, our county attorney, that the consumer protection, could we put what we feel protects the consumer in our memorandum of understanding? And the, the, we can take input from the board and from the tax collector on what we feel would be the proper consumer protection and then bring this back up.
Okay. I mean, I, I think we probably just step into this slowly with one part of the time and see how it works. And, you know, it might be where we want to look at residential at some point, but. I think this is something new to all of us and, and I'll be honest with you, the first time I heard of Pace was at the economic development meeting last week. And I've done a lot of reading since then, but I'm just not comfortable with residential at this time.
Yeah, they, you know, I, 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 I feel this is a too important issue to put way back on the back burner. It's something that the attorney should work on and be able to bring us back a document. And we might have to go back and amend it or put other thoughts into it, but something that is a work in progress and not just laid dormant somewhere. So there's a lot of people could benefit the right way from this program, the right people, yeah.
And, and what I'm saying is, I think that some of this negativity, and that's nothing on the tax collector or anybody else, probably is from loans that were made back when this was a new organization that was the Wild West. And, and, and I would like to study that a little more and see how many, I'd like to talk to a couple of the counties and see how is it now? Cause they've been through both sections of it and I'd like, I'd like to know who those people are and find out if it's been cleaned up. Cause we had title loans, cleaned them up and then decided, there's all kinds of ways that we've tried to help people with loans and, and it was bad in the beginning and it became good. So I, I'm not completely against it. I am not against, I'm like Rocky and he's put a motion forward. You still second the amended motion, right?
I'll, I'll second, I'll second the motion as amended for discussion. And I have, I don't disagree with what you're saying. With, with, we, we could take and we could, if we ever went the residential route, we could put that in, and we could craft that in our memorandum. But my question is, why do we have to craft that? Why wouldn't they craft that? I mean, you know our concerns and you're passionate about all these consumer protections. Why, why, why don't y'all craft something that assures us there's not gonna be this predatory lending and we're not gonna have contractors from all over, you know, the United States targeting Columbia County?
I think their, their whole argument is they already have.
Okay.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Whit. But to me, when I put, put the meat in the beans, I want to know what meat I'm putting in. And, and that's why I want the county to look after her citizens by putting the consumer protection that we feel is necessary, we compare it, and compare it against what they're doing and come up with a finished product.
But I'd like to see what they, what they are doing. So they could present, they could bring us up the back to look at.
Well, I think, and I think, I think he just said they had Leon County. I, I think, I think the, I think the, the best way for this board to move forward right now because it is, I think we all, and everybody's comments agree, this is a good thing for commercial. Let's move forward with that route. Let's pay attention to what goes on in Leon and in some of these other places who, who have adopted it under their revised program, not the old program where they had the problems, but with these consumer protections they say they have in place. Let's let them be our guinea pig and we'll readdress this at another time. If it works and that, it's over there. We all go to Florida Association of County meetings, we all know these folks. We can, we can ask questions and bring it up and we can do our own research. But let's, let's see what these other counties do. If their program truly is improved and it works different now, we'll know that and we can take that at a later date.
I agree.
But, but still, but still, I want Joel and this board to come up with what we think also and be able to compare. Did they meet this guy criteria, did they meet this criteria? Did they meet the criteria that the tax collector?
Did you include, did you include that in the motion? You included that in the motion?
If, if I can make a suggestion, Mr. Chair?
Do we need a motion to vote on that?
Mr. Chair, take a vote on that. And then by way of a second motion, if you could invite the tax collector and the property appraiser to join me in those negotiations as they've requested, make a motion for that committee to be formed.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, motion passes.
And now I'll make another motion that our attorney invite our tax collector and our property appraiser to review this contract and have input on it also.
Second. Second, you got a second? Motion is second, all in favor? All opposed, motion passes.
I think I called it a contract, should be a resolution, I, I think.
I know y'all wanted to talk about your consumer, but let's get with the law. It's just a lot more time efficient, yeah. Thank you, thank you very much.
Robin, if I want to ask, Jennifer brought this to the economic development board, she might have something to add, I don't know.
Jennifer, do you have anything to add to this?
You don't have to. This isn't a job requirement.
Good evening, pictures. And number one, I just wanted to thank you for considering the, the opportunity. From an economic development perspective, it's definitely a tool that we could put in our toolbox that, you know, we're, we're limited as far as incentives or, or things we could do to attract companies. Ryan alluded to two existing businesses that are interested in the project or the, the program. In addition to that, I have two other companies. So from, from my perspective, it's, it's just an alternative, it's an option to give them a little extra financing when they may have a gap that they look for.
I think everybody agrees with you on the, you know, the.
Right. And, and, you know, considering the residential, it's, I would say a supporting role in economic development. We all know how housing runs and how workforce housing always comes up in these conversations. So again, I just want to say I appreciate you considering and consider and continue to do the research for this program. If there's anything I can do, please let me know.
Thank you very much. All right. We got Sweetwater Affordable Housing Project.
Are you going, are you going to? Or use the word after?
Oh, Sarah, oh, I got Sarah last. Sarah, I got you down next.
Good evening, the commissioners, my name is Lester McKellum. I'm the executive director of the Red Lake City Community Development Corporation. And you know me, I've been here several times about support for the Sweetwater Affordable Housing Project. Today, I'm here to revise our request for assistance from the Board of County Commissioners. And I want to tell you why we revised that request. The reason we revised it because we were approved initially for 4% tax credit on the development of the Sweetwater project. Since that time, the economy has been running in loops and throwing us behind, making us short of revenue to provide the funding for that project. We have sensed because of the difficulties we've had and, and the denial of our request for funding, even from this board, that we've had to go back to Florida Housing Finance Corporation and request a 9% tax credit for the low income housing development. The difference between the two is the 4% would provide us about 30% of what it would take to do this development. The 9% will, will have provided 70% of the cost to develop this housing project. So at our request from Florida Housing, we were told that we would need the assistance of our local government in order for them to approve that 9% increase. Cause it's costing them another probably two or three billion dollars or more. My request tonight, we want to change that so we can get approval from this board for a $500,000 commitment to this project over a period of 18 months probably. We won't need this money until probably the third or the fourth quarter of 2024. The $500,000 we're talking about, the loan. And that's why I'm here today.
So, so if I understand you, you're dropping your request from 900 to 500?
To 500. Reason me, like I said, in order for us to get that 9% from Florida Housing Finance Corporation, we need the approval of this board. Our local government need to sign on with us to do this project before they will approve the 9% that we requested.
David, I, I, I thought in our conversation, you said it would be a three-year period.
Well, that's what Mr. McKellum just said. The actual need for the money would be at the end of 2024. I asked him to verify that. So he was saying what, fourth quarter of 2024?
Yes.
Which could not be next fiscal year, but possibly the fiscal year after that.
Right, it's an 18-month bill, 18, maybe 20-month bill, depending on material, contractors, whether it all those situations considered. So we're looking at 2024, at the end of the bill, we would need that $500,000 for the project.
But still a $500,000 loan with the previous caveat, if you want to say, what the contract was, that is zero interest, a month a year. Everything stayed the same, it's just dollar amount changed, correct?
Right, I mean, ultimately the final documentation, once you agree on this, would dictate all that because we'd have to come back with the documents. I mean, obviously you can't approve the loan without actually having the physical documents, but it would allow you to budget for it over a two fiscal year period.
Correct.
Mr. McKellum?
Yes.
Is the, is the size of the project going to stay the same? So many.
Yeah.
And what is, what is, what is your expected cost of the total project?
Now, with the change in cost and the economy, we're looking at probably 19 million.
So basically we can get a $19 million housing project in Columbia County for 500,000, if we commit 500,000.
If you commit 500,000, we get more assistance from the state of Florida. Now, they are willing to commit to 9%.
Well, I would, according to this attorney, I don't know if that ever payback would happen, but.
It'd be considered a grant, yeah. I, I just, I just want to remind the board that, you know, we received the millions that we received in COVID relief and ARPA funds. One of the things that they wanted that money used for was affordable housing. And, and I know when this first came up and it was $3 million, it wasn't really palatable to the taxpayers. But at some point, this keeps going down and, and I mean, we had the conversation about roads in our, in our last, in our last board meeting where, you know, why wouldn't you, you pay an extra million to get $30 million in roads? Well, why won't you use the same example for affordable houses? They actually are getting, can pull the federal and state funds off based on our action. To me, that's, that's a heck of a return on investment for Columbia County.
But Chairman, I move that we grant the development of the $500,000 within, within the next 18 months with the payback that, that was in place on the original request.
And I'll second, but I have one, one thing for the attorney. Approving this tonight, they still have to meet everything, everything else. Everything else in the project has to go before we tie this money up, correct? Well, you, you actually have a couple of procedural issues. This isn't on the action agenda. This is only on the presentations agenda. So what I need to do is get you a resolution. If you remember the resolution that we did back in 21, that was your expression of what your level of commitment was. And you were very careful to say, we have a promising thing. What Mr. McKellum is asking you to do is promise it, okay? Which you can do by resolution, I just have to make that language say that. And then I think that'll satisfy Tallahassee.
It would.
And then you would still obviously need to decide how you're gonna budget for it, but you are committing, okay? Now, the loan documentation and the formalization, what we would call the closing, would be subsequent to the contract. Your resolution, making the unilateral promise to provide the money will be your contract. Be this board's contract to Mr. McKellum and his organization that you are going to provide the money. And then you would need to appropriate it in the next two budgets. So even though, I mean, you've made the motion tonight and I'm taking that as direction, I'll get the resolution.
So even though, I mean, you've made the motion tonight and I'm taking that as direction, I'll get the resolution for you for the next agenda. You can vote on that in the in the action agenda.
Got it.
And then that'll bind the board, yeah, at the very next meeting.
So we won't vote on that.
You're voting to direct Joel to bring it back?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Very good. Joel, will this resolution confirm the commitment for the county and local government that you in favor of this, supporting this project?
Yeah, with the dollar amount too. And and that's what I was saying, the last time the board approved, they approved with the caveat that, you know, hey, we like it, but we're not really committed.
Yeah.
They're telling you by this resolution, they are committed.
Very good.
They're going to find the money and get it to you. That's the resolution I have to draft. So that'll be on the next agenda.
I certainly appreciate it. Thank you, guys, for your assistance.
And I want to tell you, I appreciate your bulldogging this where you come here and you told us what you wanted and you have, you have stuck with it and you have not gotten mad and we easy to get mad at. We won't, I won't tell you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we we appreciate.
Always, always nice and always forward with us. We really appreciate the way you presented it.
And and we can't do it alone. The growth of this county is very important to all of us. We we certainly are limiting, minimizing the effect of homelessness here also in this county. Because the price of rent, like it is now, people can't afford it. So at that point, if they can't afford to pay rent, they're going to be homeless.
Oh, I I agree. It's definitely needed in our community.
We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKellum.
Ms. Wheeler? You got a minute and a half.
As y'all know, I'm Sarah Wheeler. Tonight, I'm here for Altrusa, and this is Ms. Dorrell Bailey. And Dorrell's the president of Altrusa of Lake City, and I'm the service chair for this year. We're here to ask permission for placement of a new project that we want to do for Columbia County called the Lending Library. Altrusa International has a two-year literacy project, is challenging each chapter to collect 500 books to distribute to their community. We have come up with a book drive to reach this goal. If you look on the back sheet, it's the flyer for the book drive. The way we wish to distribute those books are through the lending library. That is why we're here this evening. I have chosen community centers throughout the county we all love. I've chosen a community center that are farthest from the three public libraries. I have reached out to Ms. Evans to make sure that this project will not interfere with the public libraries or anything that the Friends of Library has working currently. I spoke to her on the phone and as well as email, and in her email, she said, thank you for checking with us, and she wished us luck on our project. The locations I have chose for our county are the Park in Columbia City, by Columbia City Elementary, Deep Creek, Lulu, Mason City, and Winfield. I chose these because they are all seven to 11 miles from the closest library. I have chosen another location, but it's in the city of Fort White because the community center in Fort White is directly across from the public library. I've chosen a location at Plymouth and Wilson Springs, and I'm in contact with Major Fraser about that. Mayor, not major. The lending library gives the citizens a glimpse of literacy that can be challenging in the rural areas, especially with gas prices. This isn't on my slide, but or my, I just want to say this. I called some of the community centers and asked their thoughts on it. The gentleman at Winfield, I believe his last name was Alan, he just said that he wanted to speak to other people in the community to see how they felt about it. I talked to Shannon Hall at Deep Creek, and she said that they are overgrown with youth in the Deep Creek community because of housing issues. Because people are living at Milton's in camp, in campers now. And she says anytime you ride by the community center in Deep Creek, there's children there playing and they have nothing else to do because they're so far from town. I spoke to Kimmy because she's over Lulu, and she basically said anytime you go out to Lulu, there's kids all around. Lulu or Kimmy had some suggestions about where we place them at the community centers. But I could not get a hold of Ms. Riles or the other lady for Mason City. So I did try to reach out and get their opinions as well, not just kind of come to y'all without talking and getting different people's ideas. The lending library allows citizens to share their books with others and connect us to readers in meaningful ways. The structural wise, the lending library would measure roughly 20 inches wide by 15 inches deep and 18 inches high. It'll be on a sturdy post with a secure foundation, and each one would be weatherized. It would be weatherized because there are several already in town at different businesses. For example, Tina Seifert has one at hers, and she says that it does get used on a regular basis, but it's not weatherized, so it needs to be rebuilt. Each lending library will have a plaque on it that will say Altrusa's Lending Library. It will also have who donated it and who built the box. The boxes will be filled and maintained by Altrusa members. This would be zero cost to Columbia County or the citizens using the books. And I've already got six sponsors for all the lending libraries to be built. So in short, the lending library is a free book exchange. It belongs to everyone and everyone can use it. You take a book, you see something you would like, you read it and you take it, and when you're finished, you return it or you share with a friend. You give the books. If you have a book, you give a book, bring the books back so it can continue to be Altrusa's lending library. And that's pretty much it. And I thank y'all for y'all's time.
Thank you, Sarah.
What, so what do what are you asking for, Sarah?
I just want permission to put it at the community center or where we can put it at a community center. Because I didn't want to go to a business because, I mean, for example, your business. I don't want to put it there because that's not where kids play, obviously, because of your business. But, um, so I'm just saying. I mean, and then, Mr. Murphy, we don't want more welding equipment and, I mean, come on, look what Rocky does.
I have kids in the front.
I mean.
People that go to jail have kids too.
Trust me, I know.
Since, okay, I've had my feelings hurt now for the day.
You have feelings?
Y'all want to, somebody want to do a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. We grant her a request to use community centers for this project.
And in front of A1 bail bonds especially.
Hey, I even checked in Fort White or the Five Points Park, but it's under construction to make it better for the citizens of district.
Did you check with Springfield Community Center?
The reason I did not choose Springfield is because I felt that we are going to, I wanted every one of them. I even asked Kimmy about Mike'sville because I thought that was a community center, and I told her about Bethlehem, I think it was. But I didn't choose Springfield because it's on the county line, basically. It's only like a mile and a half. Because I checked every community center to see what the miles is. It's like 6.4 to go to the one in Columbia City. It's 11.9 to Winfield. I mean, I checked every single one of them, and I've driven to every one of them to kind of get like in my head where I want the box. But that's why I'm here, just for permission, basically. And also, like, in Rocky's district, the only thing he has is the Fort White Community Center and the Columbia County Library is directly across the street. So I didn't want to take anything for Katrina and her staff. So that's whenever I reached out to Ronnie and asked him about, or Mayor Fraser, about the park at Plymouth and Wilson Springs. So I just want to, y'all know how I am. I just want to save Columbia County. And, um, so this is my thing.
And you want to include everybody, I understand.
I really do, and I try my best.
Thank you very much for your consideration. We have a motion on this ridiculous thing.
I second.
It's not ridiculous.
I'm joking.
I'm not going, I'm not going to vote against anything Altrusa wants, truthfully.
Oh, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Sarah.
Motion passes.
I I I think getting literature out there for kids to read is very important.
Well, it's going to be of all ages, so you can stop by and visit too.
Okay.
And on behalf of Altrusa, we really appreciate this because our goal is to have the books available for all ages. But also, we realize that in our school system, literacy is an issue. So it will allow these children that don't have the opportunity to get to a public library to have books to continue to read.
And and it'll help kids get their face out of a cell phone.
And we thank y'all, especially Altrusa. If you're not familiar with with what the women of Altrusa do to this community, they they do a wealth of stuff. It, it's a great organization, and and I know several people who are in it, and thank you for all y'all do.
And and we're scared of all of y'all, so we're not going to vote against anything y'all want.
Thank you again.
All right. What do we have next? We got.
Public hearings.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Jennifer Dubose? Hey, Jennifer, you're looking kind of rough.
Jennifer grew big.
Yes. Not as cute as you want her.
I can attest to that. Good evening. Obviously, I'm not Jennifer Brandon Stubbs here. Jennifer's out this evening, and I will go through this for you. The two companion items this evening, one's a land use, one's a zoning change. The first is CPA 0242, ordinance 2204. It's a request to amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan from industrial to residential low density for three tax parcels off of Wilkes Lane. This is in District 3 Hollingsworth District, and the Planning and Zoning Board voted to recommend approval to the Board of County Commission, and nobody spoke in opposition. And the companion item is Z 0606. It's ordinance 2022-05. Again, it's a request to amend the official zoning atlas from industrial to residential, single-family mobile home, too, for three lots off of Wilkes Lane. And this is also in District 3 Hollingsworth District, and the Planning and Zoning Board voted to recommend approval to the Board of County Commission. And if it's pleasure of board, we can do one motion for ordinance 2022-04 and then let the board vote and do the rest.
I'm hereby open a public hearing on CPA 0242, ordinance 2022-04. Does anybody want to speak to that? See, you know one. I'll now close the public hearing. Second. A motion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I hereby open a public hearing on Z 0606, ordinance 2022-05. Do I have anyone here to comment? Seeing I have no one, I hereby close the public hearing.
Move to it, y'all.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Do I have a motion for approval, consideration?
So moved.
I'll second that with discussion, please. I'd like to pull, I'm sorry. I'd like to read my paper today. David, which one was the, on the Eagles on the Wings?
Which one?
Eagle's Wings.
On Eagles Wings is number five.
Number five.
Did you want to pull it or discuss it?
I pulled it for discussion, for discussion, clarity or whatever.
All right, let's do that.
Okay. So I'll make, I'll change my motion to pull number five for discussion. And I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. So have a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, maybe take up that item that got pulled right now. No, just separately, just take up item five right now.
David, explain that. Give us some clarity on that.
So item five is during the budget process, you required on Eagles Wings to have an audit and approved up to $5,000 for that audit. This then takes that money and puts it in there to pay for the audit. They originally submitted an audit at a different price. We told them, nope, that wasn't going to fly. They came back with the $5,000. The audit was conducted by Powell and Jones.
And the, and we'll be taking this up at what point of our, the, in the future for the, I know we allocated and said we'll put, we'll put four to five out. But I just want to make that point that this is not an extension of the agreement.
No, this is part of the original agreement that the board did adopt. It is, like I said, you required an audit. This pays for that audit. And at some time, if you want to have a discussion of the audit, we can.
I received a copy of the audit, and I would just ask to make sure, if if the other commissioners haven't got it, I would like to make sure they got it where they can review it because I'm sure they're going to come to us during budget time and request funding. And that's all I had, Chair. I just want to make that clear, make y'all aware.
Okay, do we need to do another adoption?
You need a motion to approve the request in item five.
Mr. Chairman. And and let's remember during that discussion about on Eagle Wing, I made a motion that all entities that receive money from Board of County Commissioners before they get their money in '22, '23, they present it forward to all of them.
Absolutely.
We have a motion to.
Wait a minute.
The the motion is to approve budget amendment 22-71.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Kirby?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have three items for your consideration this evening. Okay, the first is bid number 2022, Water Main Materials Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company. So this, if we recall, we're getting ready to run a water line from Ellis Field to Fort White to improve our drinking water. This board indicated that we want to go ahead and do a direct purchase for more than one reason. We did quite a bit of studying on this for HDPE versus C900 pipe. If you were to ask Kevin Kirby, C900 pipe was the only way to go for more than one reason. Unfortunately, with today's economy, it was double the price of HDPE. So we did a lot of studying. Basically, the biggest difference is is anybody can lay C900 pipe. When you have to go in and repair the HDPE, it requires welding and certifications and stuff like that. But we did work through it, the logistics of it. So therefore, we did receive four bids. The low bid was with a consolidated pipe company, so I'm recommending a motion to approve bid to Consolidated Pipe Supply Company for HDPE, DR 13.5 in the amount of $999, 158.96.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
And and I'll just make a comment. I was real surprised that this bid come in as low as it did. I mean, I I know that's a lot of money, but we were expecting to be more than that.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm very pleased with that, with that price. Is it, is this steel pipe, Rocky?
No, it's 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 HDPE. It's a, it's a plastic.
It's a plastic.
But it's got welded joints.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's.
Yeah. That that was the concern. I'm familiar with both materials.
Yeah.
And as far as the actual initial installation, it's, it's not problematic. It's when you go back after that, when you tie into it, all that good stuff. The cost difference between the C900, which is a PVC pipe, it was double.
But I think we all agree that this is probably the pipe of the future of water and sewer, so we we might as well learn to adapt to it.
I want to say I've just seen this being used over in that project.
It's being used on every water sewer project.
We call it Driscoll pipe, often, that's what we, well.
Right, same thing, yes, sir. Okay, the second item, Mr. Chair, is just a housekeeping issue. Inter property located at 237 Gary Liberty Loop. Basically, we had a tree on the right of way, fell partially on private property. Recommended motion to approve request to enter the property located at 237 Southwest Gary Liberty Loop for tree removal.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. The final item is bid number 2022-05, which is a sidewalk project, a lap project. This is funded by DOT, administered by DOT. We're just a handler. We received two bids. Recommend a motion to approve an award bid to John C. Hip Construction in the amount of $205,763.60.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank y'all, gentlemen.
Thank you. David Kraus?
Good evening. I have just four short items. Again, most of them are just housekeeping. The first one is the Emergency Management Preparedness and Assistance Grant. It's the same one we get every year from the state that funds Shane Morgan's program. The big thing this year, it's 105806, which is what it was last year. It's pretty, pretty consistent at that level. The biggest thing that people don't realize is it is actually a July 1st to June 30th funding. So in your budget, you actually basically give them a quarter, and then when the funding comes in, it makes it back up. So it's an accounting issue, but from your perspective, you've already appropriated the money as part of the budget. So we're asking you to approve the grant agreement and execute.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The next one is an interlocal agreement with the city of Lake City for emergency home repairs. We've talked about this before. The city wants to give us a flat $250,000 one-time payment lump sum to run their emergency repair program. We will run it identical to how we do our emergency repair program, using the same contractors and the same personnel. Mr. Foreman and myself and Mr. Koberlein, Mr. Kirby met this afternoon. We all reviewed it. Everything is good, except there's an A missing in the word agent in one page. So we're asking to approve the interlocal agreement with the city of Lake City for emergency home repairs.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes, sir.
On that, there is going to be. On that, there is going to be, did the city council did or did not agree to a additional $250,000 once this is used?
That they indicated that that was their intention, but as of right now, they have not approved that and did not include it in the interlevel agreement. So my understanding is, once we complete this two fifty, they're planning to give us an additional two fifty after that. And if people want to apply for it, we'll send the link over to the city tomorrow, and they'll put the link on their website, so they would go to the city website, click on the link to get to the application. It takes it right back to our computer system, and it's the same application that we use.
David, will Ms. Feagle be?
Yes.
Dealing with this, okay.
So Ms. Feagle is the processor, she takes in all the applications. She helps the people through the process, she tries to verify everything. And then we send it to Antonio, who's with Guardian. Antonio goes out and he meets with the property owners. They develop a scope of work. He has pre-qualified bidders, so he will go out and bid it with the pre-qualified contractors that all meet HUD specifications, because we use the same contractors for the CDBG grant as we use for this grant. And he'll sit there with the homeowners through the actual construction before he ever approves final payment for the contractors.
David has construction going on, how about a million dollar project?
Um.
Home repair.
I'll have to get you an update. I know Antonio's gone, he's going through them about six houses at a time.
Give us an update our next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, he's going through six houses at a time, I'm just not sure where he's at.
Okay.
The next is the Economic Development Agreement with New Millennium that was presented to the Economic Development Advisory Board. As you can see, sort of see, there's a yellow line around six and a half acres of the land that we own. I know the property appraiser's map says it's a little bit more than that, but that's because it includes the right of way around the street as well. But it is six and a half acres right there where David's highlighting. It's landlocked, it doesn't have access to Baskin Norris Road, it's adjacent to New Millennium. The other property owner adjacent to it is Anderson Columbia. We really have no use for it. However, New Millennium does. So an economic development agreement that we filed with Mayo Fertilizer in 2017 gave Mayo Fertilizer, well, it required Mayo Fertilizer to purchase the land unless New Millennium exercised their option on the property. And that agreement was extended by this board till 2021. At this time, New Millennium has approached us, sent a letter, indicated to our attorney and to Economic Development that they are interested in the land because they're expanding production and they need more space for their laydown yard. And we presented it to the Economic Development Advisory Board, and they unanimously voted to push and request this to you for approval. So what we are asking is for this board to approve the release and satisfaction of the agreement with Mayo Fertilizer, therefore releasing them from their commitment, and then authorizing the county attorney to prepare an economic development agreement with New Millennium Steel for the purchase of the property at the $97,500 price tag that was in the original 2017 agreement.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
And then finally, Fort White Utility, Fort White Columbia County Utility Advisory Committee, we would like to have you vote to appoint Tom Autumn to the Town, County Utility Committee.
So move. Second.
A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
And then I think on your addition, yeah, welcome, Tom. On your addition, it was the memorandum of understanding with the Fish and Wildlife. The reason this was not in your agenda packet is because we received it today at about two o'clock, two thirty. We reviewed it, again, our attorney reviewed it with Mr. Cobreline, myself and Mr. Kirby. They made some minor modifications, but they were just, you know, make sure it was the right chairman of the board, that kind of stuff. What they are asking this board to commit to is seventy five, up to, up to $75,000 cash. That's it. Everything else would be the command on the city side or the command on Fish and Wildlife side.
The board, if I may, and the chair, if I may, I guess the tag name for the county, this does lie within District Five, but of course, we all had discussion about this before. I have, me personally, I have no problem with this memorandum of understanding. I would ask this board to give consideration to the constituents. I don't, I feel like this has been a concerned topic. I'm not going to say a hot topic, because the citizens in David's neighborhood are quite concerned of taxpayers' dollars going out there spending three, four hundred thousand dollars on a dock, and they walk away from, walk away from it for lack of better words, and it goes to disarray. I feel like I personally have talked them into going down the aluminum line and hopefully spending that kind of money, and Kilgore's is not going to build it. And I'm not going to furnish it at a level that high. But my point is, is that hopefully this is going to look as a focus point for the FWC in North Florida. But with that being said, I personally went to a city council meeting and requested from the council and the mayor for, before we get into signing this and signing our check, I'm looking for a commitment from the City of Lake City. How are you going to properly maintain this place? How are you going to put the fence up to control vagrants from sleeping there during the night, running people off, going down there begging for money? You know, people take, getting out to try to take their kids to go fishing. The City of Lake City has yet to come up with that. I personally have not recommended that we spend taxpayers' dollars towards this project, even though I think it's a great project. But hopefully, and I thought three weeks ago when I went to the city council meeting and asked them to have this ready when this draft got put, but why it's not happened, can't ask that question. But I'm glad they brought it out. But I'm just asking the board with respect to the constituents in the area that are greatly affected by this project to, I don't want to take any kind of vote on this, because this is not proper representation to the constituents. They should have had noticed that, hey, this is going to be on the agenda tonight. Because I didn't know nothing about it until I walked through that door.
So the reason it was presented to us the way it was is FWC has apparently informed the city that they have to have a financial commitment by the end of this month. So that, but I agree with you, a hundred percent agree with you, Commissioner Murphy, and that's what we got.
But, but. You're right, and I stress that. And FWC called us that four months ago at their office. The City of Lake City has known that right on down the line. I personally reached out to Mr. Sampson. Get off of it, you know, this is what we need. And so I just don't want to, I personally have been involved in two dock building projects at Lake Montgomery in the years I've been in business. And this is a big step. City, ditto's to Paul and staff and Steve Brown. They're doing everything they can to get it up under, you know, get it going. And I understand exactly why. I committed to the money, but I'm not committing to the money until the City of Lake City tells me, county, your money is going to be protected because we're going to step up and do this. Just like we have a Rixton Community Center, you know, they know that Columbia County Water Commissioners are going to go over there and take care of our investment there, just like we are, you know, at every single community center. I mean, so I just want some guarantee for our money. I think it's right that we, all the, you know, they can't, they can't argue with us because, you know, our recreation center here, it's second to none. You know, and it's, it's definitely a better place to go than where we used to go.
Mr. Chairman, so we're wanting to put this on the next agenda.
I think we have to vote on this tonight if we're going.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
And Joel can tell me if this is legal, it may not be. Would the board be interested in amending the agreement to commit the money contingent upon meeting the criteria that Commissioner Murphy is talking about?
I mean, this is a draft, nobody else has signed it, so that's, you could make a motion to approve with the amendment and then just say what you want.
Okay.
The alternative procedurally would be to call the special meeting between now and the end of the month, which you could do. But again, logistically, lots of people are traveling this time of year and things like that.
Do we have a motion to?
Well, I think at this time, we, we're really committing this money to FWC.
Yeah. No, we're not. Read this draft. We're over this job. They're putting us over this job.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is FWC come to us for this money. So I heard the proposal by FWC.
Yeah, but Rocky, that's what I'll point out to you. They're changing it. They're putting this, they're putting this dog in our, in our back pocket. This is a city project, am I right, David?
No, no, we only committed for the seventy five thousand.
No, we only do money, the city does in-kind services.
Okay, well, where's the?
And then they obtain the building and environmental.
I'm not reading what you're talking about.
Hold on a minute, make up. Okay. Responsibilities of the commission, that's us, I guess, right?
No, no, we're the county.
Okay.
We're the county, we're C.
Seventy five thousand.
And that's it.
Okay.
That's all our responsibilities.
So we're asking to amend that section with the commitment?
Yeah, I mean, I thought I read it pretty closely.
Well, that's what happens when you only get.
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion?
Okay, here's one, I just wanted to say, I think we approved the money for the dock like we already committed to do.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we work with the city for some kind of maintenance and operation down there. And at some point, I mean, the park is in the county too. I'm not saying we take it over, but we, we make sure the city does their part as far as the parks go.
Here, this.
Our FWC is going to have to step up.
This dock to me going to be just like when the city put in the swimming pool, I don't want no part of it. They are responsible for the, for the maintenance of it, the upkeep of it. All we doing is committing seventy five thousand dollars to get the dock done.
Correct.
Everything else, they kind of have no reliability or responsibility.
So we need to put that in the motion, is that?
And I'll simply make the motion, if I may, Chair. I'll make the motion to commit this money contingent on a maintenance plan of the other expansions and modifications that's been presented at the city to Montgomery Park Lake. That should give them the opportunity to bring that back to us.
Yeah, but the maintenance plan might include the help from the, from the county.
Well, they can bring it to us, but, and not speaking for the board. And Ron and I was real careful when I went up there. I was speaking as a commissioner in that district, not the.
Yeah, but I'm figuring out.
I agree with you on that.
Yeah, I'm not trying to take over your district, but I don't want no maintenance or nothing else of that, of that.
I agree.
If it turn out to be a white elephant, it's their white elephant.
Yeah, I think we probably.
I'll include that in the motion, Ron, but I agree with you a hundred percent.
So it sounds like the motion is. Your attorney has a question.
Before there's a vote, before there's a vote, if I can make a suggestion to Commissioner Murphy's concern, if you added at D three, the responsibilities of the city, you could say the continuous, you know, regular maintenance of the park, and then put your conditions, go ahead and write it right in here. Because if you say it's conditioned upon receiving a plan back, it's really not, you're not going to have a meeting where you can accept that. Does that make sense? And that's, that's Commissioner Williams' point, is we don't know what it's going to look like. So what I'd recommend to you, Commissioner Murphy, maybe take a minute, look at that D, subsection D, and where it says it's got one and two responsibilities, add a number three, and say whatever you want the level of maintenance to be, spell it out.
I don't know that we should be dictating to the city.
Me either.
What they should do and what they shouldn't do.
That's right.
I mean, we committed to spend the money on the pier.
We don't have.
It's in the city, I think we spend the money on the pier, and we try to, and we tell the city we expect you to maintain this.
That's it.
We don't dictate. I don't know how you're going to dictate what the city does with their park.
That's right.
And, 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 and maybe that's, maybe that's the reason why, but that's the commitment I was asking for out of the city. Because just like Ron shared with me earlier before the meeting, you know, because I was getting his history, you know, when they did that, I call it the trash collection deal. Nobody maintains it. So what's the sense in us taking taxpayers' dollars, spending all that money out there, and then a year from now, two years, and now we're looking at the dump again?
But you're also providing a pier for the citizens of Lake City and Columbia County to fish off of.
I agree.
I mean, you know, that's, that's my commitment.
So you're basically saying we're doing our part, if they don't do their part, that's okay.
It's their part, they need to maintain it. But we can't make the city do, I don't know that we can make the city maintain anything. Oh, I, I mean, but at the end of the day, I still want to commit the money that we promised FWC on this project to build this pier.
Commissioner, Commissioner Murphy, and I think I did see some of your, watch some of your meetings, the meeting you were speaking at with the city. It seemed to me that they were committed to coming up with a maintenance plan, they just haven't done it yet. And I assume, but we just got this draft today, they didn't know we were getting this draft today. So, I mean, I think they're willing to take that step, I think they were already making moves to take that step. I just, I just don't know, we can dictate.
But, but, but I was, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, just, you know, this is an agreement among all of these parties, and we do delineate what our responsibilities are, and what's not included under responsibility of the cities is anything about who, whether they maintain it after. So I mean, you could even put, I mean, I wrote up real quick, perform regular maintenance and upkeep of the pier and surrounding park area, including enforcement of rules preventing use of the park after dark. Because I know that was a major citizen concern.
Are you, are you good with that, Mr. Murphy?
So if I can make the recommendation, if you just say so move, number three would be perform regular maintenance and upkeep of the pier surrounding park area and including enforcement of rules preventing use of the park after dark.
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
I'm here to help, sir, I'm here to help, sir.
You're rocking, I'm going to lower it to that pole.
Robbie's a librarian. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Do we have any open public comments to the board? All right, seeing none, do we have staff comments?
I'll, I'll make it brief. As you read in the newspaper, we did receive a state grant for economic development marketing up at the Bell Road Corridor. We're very excited that that is part of what was approved by the governor, and you're very thankful to have gotten it. It'll help us target and plan to target specific industries under the Bell Road Corridor. Having talking about grants, I went to the city this week and talked to them about the Economic Development Administrative Grant. We had been getting conflicting results on whether the city felt they could continue with the grant or not. Their board, not by vote, because it was a workshop, but by consensus, indicated they still want to proceed with that grant. And so now we're going to try and get that grant moving forward.
Which grant was that, David?
That was the Economic Development Administration Grant for the hangars at the airport, to put in fire suppression.
So they are going to proceed with that?
They, the board indicated that's what the board wanted to do. There was some concerns by staff about liability questions. Their board did not seem to have that issue. So we're proceeding with that. And then finally, on grants, the state legislature just announced that they have more money to give out, kind of like the legislative appropriation through the House. We are asking the board to, just making sure you have no issues with us going ahead and applying for a million dollars of that funding for Bell Road Extension.
Apply for two.
I think the total cost was one point six. Was there a match? So if you want us to apply for more, we can.
Can we not apply for more grants?
We were advised the recommended amount to ask for a consideration was right around one million.
That was the sweet spot.
Yeah, maybe more than that, they just put it to the side.
All right, David, do what you do.
Actually, our new employee is doing it. Called delegation, their new employee is doing it.
He's already making us money, good job.
Do we have any commissioner comments?
Oh, I got a couple more, real quick.
Okay.
I'll be quick, I promise. We're working on a memorandum of understanding for the consolidation of dispatch. That was one of the things the attorneys talked about today. It's going to take a little while to get it. Right now, we're waiting for comments in the back from some of the participating parties. But we are still moving forward with trying to see if we can get a consolidated dispatch. I have bad news to give you. After all this time, Project Wave has decided to go in a different direction and will not be relocating at the industrial park. In terms of the industrial park sewer project, some of the commissioners were asking me about it. We are going to do a, we're looking at going out to bid on a construction manager risk to go ahead and make that project work forward. We're also having another engineer, value engineer the project to see if we can control the costs and keep it within our budget. So the bids should be going out, I believe, next week. So the bids should be going out, I believe, next week. And then finally, um, Rum Island Kiosk is working. It's collecting money, but we have issues of it breaking on the weekends. And we are developing policies on what we're gonna do to handle that. Uh, we also would like to change some of the fee structure and revise the ordinance where you created it to reflect what we're actually doing. So for instance, the hours are wrong, um, and that sort of thing. And we're gonna put that on the next agenda. So if you have any issues with Rum Island, please let us know. And that's everything.
All righty. We have commissioner comments? Okay, I have a comment, Commissioner. Um, I know that the last couple of meetings ago, or it might have been the last meeting, we had the decision that we were, there were, there were two options, I think. I think I'm right by saying, if I'm not correct, that we were either gonna create our own, you know, animal, um, on the enforcement side of the animals, uh, or, or the sheriff was gonna do it. We kind of decided we were gonna do one or the other. I, 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 I think that time is of the essence on this because I think that it's, it's really just hanging out there in no man's land and they're not able to, you know, they, they can't commit to doing it like they, they should, and we can't either. So I just feel like it's gonna take us a year to get the vehicles. It's gonna take us a lot of stuff to do this. I'm just hoping that we can all come together, figure out what the best way to do this is and go ahead and get that on, on, on tap. Because, like I said, it's a year just to get the vehicles. So if we want to do it with the, with the, where we hire people or if we want to do it with the sheriff, that's for us to discuss and figure out. But I just feel like if we don't move on this, we're just gonna be farther and farther behind. And like y'all know, y'all know better than me, this has lingered for years and years. And, and I just feel like we gotta, at some point, you know, go ahead and make that decision. We can go through the budget process and that, but, but we can make the decision now and get, start purchasing the vehicles because, and, because we're gonna need them either way, you know? So I'm just, I, I just wanna, it's just gonna take a long time. And I, I think we're gonna be doing the taxpayer a disservice if we don't go ahead and try to get on this and get it handled. And I'm, I'm just saying, I want to put it on the next agenda next week and, and two weeks and just so y'all know it, three weeks, so that, you know, we can discuss it and y'all can have you, you know, know what's going on.
Well, I, I, uh, well, I for one would rather the county do it, utilize uh, in agreement with you may decide that you've got the already guy out there so we don't have to buy, uh, uh, a new one and that we control the cost of it.
I just want to put it, I just want to get on, either way we gonna go, let's go. You know, that's, that's kind of what.
We've been kicking this can down the road long enough. I agree with you, Travis, we need to take the decision if we're.
Well, I appreciate, that's all I had.
It's not gonna get any better, in fact.
No, it's not gonna get better. So that's all I had.
Well, with me and Rocky take care of it in the county. We don't have that problem.
What you talking about?
I, uh, hold on a minute. Uh, boy, I, I got something I spoke to Joel on it and I reached out to Clint. Uh, I had a family reach out to me, uh, most of y'all probably know, uh, the gentleman that passed there with COVID, uh, Jerry Yates, uh, myself and Jerry and hundreds and hundreds more of us, uh, grew up playing softball here. Uh, Jerry passed COVID and, uh, had the family. And I reached out to some of the old, uh, softball players that still out there today. And, uh, some of us that's retired from it. I'm asking the board to consider, uh, allowing me to go down the path of, uh, naming, uh, what I envision at the adult softball complex is a memorial, uh, walk, if you want to call it, archway over top of the entrance, uh, saying, you know, the, uh, Jerry Yates Memorial Parkway or something along that line. Clint has, uh, agreed to work with me on this. This would be no expense to the county. Uh, I've already had several people step up and whatever it costs, you know, let me know and I'll, we'll write the check. I personally plan on, uh, proposing something to Clint where he can talk with Kevin about it. And, uh, of course, our engineer make sure everything meets all the codes and everything. Basically, I was on the look at that guy, just an arch with nice stone columns going past the sidewalks during the entrance and just basically memorializing, uh, the park to, uh, Jerry Yates who played out there since he was about eight years old and did the day that.
I don't have a problem with something like that, but I don't want to open can and warn them.
Mm-hmm.
Where, if, when someone else make a request to help something named after their loved one, they participated in something, we gotta have some kind of criteria, I think, to qualify that.
And speaking with Joel, uh, I, I don't know what the criteria are, are for that, Ron, but one thing that Clint did say, and I promised him I'd, uh, make sure I emphasize that to it, that, you know, he backed it a hundred percent as long as the board of county commissioners put it into play to where what you just spoke of, everybody in the brother. I know down in Fort Y, there's a couple, there's a couple of plaques already in sidewalk for people. No. That's, I mean, I don't have a problem.
I don't have any problem.
But I'm, I'm like, you know, I don't want to get too big or anything. I, I, you know, plaques are, you know.
Down in Fort Y, they got plaques in the sidewalk.
Right, they got plaques in the sidewalk. Total, total consideration. And like I said, I, I, I reached out to Clint for his direction because it's his responsibility to maintain it. Like I told him, I don't want to do anything that's gonna give us one more ten minute. You, you, nobody maintained nothing, you know? So, uh, myself and Clint, uh, Ed, Higgs, and a couple of us gonna get together and just kind of hash it out and see what's best and we'll bring it back to the board for presentation.
Yeah, I, I could see the plaques in the sidewalk and then that, 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 that. I just want someone else to make a statement, I want a arch put up with my name on it.
Yeah, okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I got one, one quick thing. Um, with the news of, uh, Project Wave, I mean, I, I have some real concerns. Um, I guess it just goes to the eleventh hour and, and, you know, we, we did our part and it seems like Warehouser couldn't pull it together with the client. So I, I would like to put on the next agenda kind of an overall discussion about Warehouser and what's going on out there. What's, you know, kind of what ha- what happened here, maybe without throwing anybody under the bus. So just, so we can get an understanding of what happened and what can we do different maybe to help this not happen again.
I agree with you, Mr. Whit, and I'll support that. Hey, also, let's, David, if you would, while Toby, while we're on that, I, I would like to do a review of our contract with Warehouser. I guess, I, I, I want to see, I, I, that was all done way before I was here. And, and I've never even looked at that contract and, and I, but I know, I am really kind of upset that Warehouser let this company, uh, slip away after all we've done to try to get something done out there. I mean, you know, we're putting in roads out there, we're putting in rail out there at no cost to Warehouser. So I, I think they should have stepped up and made a little more effort to keep this customers.
Well, and again, I, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus. I just think a discussion needs to be had in a public forum for all this board to understand. We don't all serve on the economic development committee. We can't all, you know, this, a lot of this is top secret and we don't hear about it till later. But this is done now, so that's what happened here.
Can I, can I offer a suggestion? Because I, I think the commissioner's point is valid, but I don't want there to be any, impression in the economic development community that if you don't make a deal with us, we're gonna air your dirty laundry at a meeting after the fact. So, and I don't, and I know that's not what you're saying, but you know, people hear things and they think things. So, uh, a prior economic development director or two would, would meet with commissioners individually. If that's something y'all are interested in, I'd maybe recommend that. And then if you're not satisfied with those answers, then put it on an agenda and have a, have a group discussion. But maybe each of y'all individually go to Jennifer and see if she can brief you and let you know. And if you're not satisfied, then have the group discussion.
Yeah.
I'm worried that if you have the group discussion, things get aired that maybe don't need to be, that, that happen in those economic development negotiations. That's, that's just my way of suggestions.
Well, David's already gotta answer the questions because I see Tony drooling.
Kevin Kirby wants to call, Mr. Kirby.
Everybody quiet.
No.
No, sir. Joe, I think this is more directed based on your comments you just made. As Commissioner Ford indicated, to take a look at our agreement with Warehouser, I stay a little bit in confused land with it. And the easiest example I can give, nothing to do with Project Wave. So I'm fully, I mean, I can read where we're responsible for roads and infrastructure, rail. Like, there's neat things that happen out there. You cannot go any further with the rail because it's a drainage issue. It's not our responsibility to dig the pond. But if you, somebody doesn't dig the pond, you can't go any further with the rail. So that's the easiest example I can give that it's kind of a real confusing state. So if we've got an agreement that I'm responsible to build your house, but you know you gotta bring in a hundred loads of field to build a house, but it's not written down that I'm responsible for bringing in a hundred loads of field, but I got a deadline to build the house, the chicken and egg type thing going.
And, and to be clear, I'm reviewing the Warehouser agreement. So this board definitely should.
That, and that, that was what I just wanted to support. Please, let's review that agreement. So as we go forward, we all have a clear, clear understanding. I don't want to be the only guy in the room saying, I don't comprehend our agreement like that. And David and I, we had a, like, sort of, not he and I, but another individual and I had a big debate. I said, I don't read it like that. Now, the individual said, well, you have to do this if you're gonna do your part. Am I making sense? But it's not the way it's written, but it's common sense. If you don't have some water for the water to go, you can't build rail. I mean, because we had to piece mill it together because of grants, et cetera, literally we built the railroad track and it went underwater with a regular rain. You first look at it, oh my Lord, what am I doing wrong? Well, we're not doing anything. If that two million dollar retention fund was built, none of that would happen. But then I don't feel comfortable, David and I have had lengthy discussion. We don't want to be doing something wrong with manpower and equipment and monies that's not written real clearly in that agreement. But then again, we don't want to be holding up the project. So I totally agree that there needs to be a clearer vision of our agreement. And a lot of questions asked because that agreement's old. And I think a lot has changed since I did the agreement. That's my opinion.
I'm, yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ron, go ahead.
I'm always one, I think, on this, I don't think Tim was, it was started before Tim got elected, uh, with Warehouser and the relationship between Warehouser and the Board of County Commissioners. Up until we started going after grants to spend, to, to develop, fully develop that property, the county did not have, not the first penny. There was no agreement, uh, per se on, except for a understanding that they were gonna put up the, how many acres it is and, and get it shovel ready. They paid for everything to that point. The county got involved and spending money to grant when we started putting the infrastructure in. So everything prior to the infrastructure being put in, Warehouser paid for all that themselves, on, on, on that. Everything was they done. Uh, uh, we had no expense in that project far as hard dollars to go. Everything out there been grant money that everybody went out to get to try to put the infrastructure in.
Yeah, Commissioner, to your point though, grant money is still taxpayer money. And, 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 and this, this thing came to the eleventh hour and then dissolved. And, and I, I kind of disagree. I think that we as commissioners and the public as taxpayers need to kind of have an understanding of what happened and what we can do better next time. I mean, without, I'm not, without having a public hearing and throwing anybody under the bus, I, I want to hear what happened from their perspective and maybe what happened from the client's perspective. I mean, it, I think the people have a right to know it.
Well, it's tough, and I, I think that should be a discussion with Warehouser, but, but, uh, they got caught in the same situation with the economy like it is from the site development, went from eight hundred thousand dollars to almost two million dollars. But I, I think that needed to come from them and we not speculate on why they didn't.
So, so.
Put, put up the additional dollars.
So, Mr. Williams, if our sewer plant goes from ten million dollars to twenty million dollars, should we just walk away?
No, but I'm saying, I just, you got to help with Warehouser.
I, I, that's what we want to do, yeah.
I was disappointed also.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and, and Mr. Whit, I realize it's taxpayer dollars, but every penny we get, no matter where we get it from, if it comes to Goodman, it's taxpayer dollars.
Exactly.
I was speaking of local tax dollars from, that came out of our, 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 our budget.
Yes, sir.
It did not, not, not any of that came from there.
Ron, what year was that? Do you recall that the board, uh, was before by time, but I remember sitting out here. When the county made the first commitment that when it comes time to put roadways through here, we were committed. What, what, how many years ago was that?
Uh, that, that had to be, uh, in the early, the late, somewhere around two thousand and ten.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
I said, it was two thousand and ten. Yes, sir.
I remember discussing long that night, I just couldn't remember it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
The, the example, the way I comprehend it, as Commissioner Williams just indicated, is based upon grant funding. And that, that was another, just heavy discussion. The way I comprehend the current agreement is we're on the hook solely based on grant availability. If you ask other people, that's not the way they comprehend it. And that, that's another, not to beat the dead horse, but that's, that's the confusing part that I get because we all want economic development, we all, we all know how important it is. But the way I, I comprehend that agreement is it's based on grant funding and here's what's laid out that the county is responsible for. The way I comprehend it, if you don't have grant monies, you're in theory not on the hook. Now, the flip side of that is, nobody doesn't want to be ready for business. So that, I think it's very wise, the board does re-educate yourselves on it.
In addition, you're at a point in time now, like Commissioner Ford was saying, where you have grant funding for fourteen million, some odd dollars for the sewer plant, but what if it comes in closer to twenty or thirty? How are you gonna fund it? Are you just gonna not fund it if the funds don't come in or?
That, and you're on the hook for creating jobs that, you know. So I think it's important when, when something like this happens, we understand and the public understands why, what happened.
I mean, I, I'll be honest with you, I'm disappointed. I'm, I, and I'm disappointed in the way it went down. I mean, I, and I, I think, I think really we're owed an explanation.
And the community is too, because as I told David through the early part of the week, uh, there are going to be a lot of that crap saying, hey, y'all, y'all screwed it no one, huh?
Mr., Mr., Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jennifer, come up here a minute. And, and, and this is what I would, I would like the board to authorize you to do.
And I will say this, we tried everything, all the tools available to the county to keep Project Wave here. Um, but we just weren't able to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I would like for, for, uh, Ms. Daniel to, to go back and create the start from what we started with Project Wave to the ending of Project Wave, our commitment to Project Wave and you work with Warehouser for you all to come up and present, hey, here's what happened, here's the process that took place from the start to begin.
To.
That way, everything is laid out.
Yeah, to, to that point, Commissioner, we, um, Ms. Figler and I are actually building that timeline now. Um, just so we have an accurate record of events from, from start to finish. It's, it's been a, and, you know, a long negotiation, but, um, and we're disappointed. Unfortunately, that's, you know, how things in, in economic development work. We learn and then we do better next time. So, um, you know, the, the positive side of this is we're, um, in a much better position when it comes to marketing and attracting companies now. We have several companies that are, um, giving us second looks. And even right now, negotiating the, uh, construction, actually, what they're looking to do is build a, a spec warehouse. Um, so they're negotiating the terms of the option on the property to get to the point of the, the building is permitted, ready for construction. So, um, you know, progress is still moving forward. We still have significant interest, even from the state perspective. Submitted a response today for a, a significant project that, um, we have a, a very good chance of, of getting a look at. So, um, the good news is we're still getting interest. Companies are still calling and asking and we're still moving forward. So we learn and we, we take the next step.
And to, to David's point, when he made the comment, the county did everything, you know, in the power to keep it. And to, to David's point, when he made the comment, the county did everything, you know, in the power to keep it. I, I do believe that and, and I mean, from, from your individual discussions with me, I do believe that. But I think putting together the timeline and calling it an after-action report or whatever, I think it's important the public know the facts, so they're confident in that too. And if there's anything we can do with our relationship with Warehouser to, to prevent, you know, losing the next one, then I think it's important to take this, do an after-action, learn from it and move forward.
Absolutely, yeah, and I will take that action.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Do, do, I, I think, when, when next board meeting, you gonna have time to get all this done between nine and the first board meeting the next month?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It'll be, you'll get, you'll have excellent, a little extra time, I think.
Anything else?
Got a motion for German?